Okay, I have 6:30. Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, February 18th regular meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council. Could you have a roll call, please?
Counselor Safavi is absent. Counselor Wheel?
Here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Gallagher?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum?
Here.
If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the agenda today, we have two presentations. First, Police Department awards, which will be a special night for us. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We have a couple of different awards to give out tonight, and I'd like to start with some awards we're doing for our reaccreditation that occurred in 2019 and also the update of our policy and procedure manual. So if I could get Officers Callahan, Nagy, Sack, and Ward, and also Property and Evidence Technician Natalie Clausens to come up, please. Let's try this. Let's line up over here. You get to go first.
You're the boss.
Well, that's such a easy thing to do. All right. So if you'll humor me, I have something to read here for both. I'm not going to read it all off five or six, seven different times, so we'll do one large letter and then you'll understand what everybody did individually. So, "The Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police adopted a professional standards accreditation program for its membership in 1986. Along with the county sheriffs of Colorado and the assistance of the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency that you know as CERSA, standards were developed and have been updated over the years in areas including use of force, pursuit driving, emergency vehicle operation, internal affairs, and many more. Accreditation is a quality assurance process under which the services and operations of law enforcement agencies are evaluated and verified by an external body of tenured experts and assessors in the field. Their role is to ensure that applicable and recognized standards are being met by the agency being evaluated. The Cherry Hills Village Police Department was first accredited in 2008. We were reaccredited in 2014, and then in 2019, we completed our second reaccreditation. When the reaccreditation process began, Officer Jennifer Callahan was on alternative duty status, working on administrative duties. I gave her the assignment, and I know she was thrilled, of becoming the coordinator for this project. Jen quickly got to work on assembling all the necessary information for the standards, which would be reviewed by the assessors. This process included the meticulous review of the department's policy and procedures to ensure adherence with the standards. To be compliant with many of the policies needed to be updated or changed, this was a very large and tedious task requiring hours of review and research. Jen stepped up to this challenge and received support from Property and Evidence Technician Natalie Clausens and Officers Kevin Nagy, Corey Sack, and Nicole Ward. Ms. Clausens is in charge of all edits to our police manual and worked diligently to ensure all the changes were formatted correctly. In addition, she worked with Jen on following up on each change and the necessary approval processes. Officers Nagy, Sack, and Ward assisted with the numerous changes to the policy and procedure and manual and the construction of the accreditation files." And if I just may, if you could see this box of files, because it's not done electronically, there's 211 different files in there, and each one of them requires review and what is our policy with regard to that. So there's a lot of work that's definitely gone into this. They worked together as a team to get the mission completed. When the department received its final report from the assessors, it stated in the onsite review, "The assessors reviewed and approved all standards while at the agency. Due to the care that had been taken in preparation of the materials, this task was not onerous as it could have been," and I know the gentleman that wrote that, and I know how much he meant that. Additionally, "the lead assessor personally contacted me and commended the staff for the condition and organization of the files. He told me they were some of the best he'd ever seen." So I'm very proud of this group for what they did. Jen obviously was the leader, but she couldn't have completed it without this team. So based on all of these things, for Jen, the department award for police commendation can be presented for an act evidencing highly professional conduct or selfless dedication to duty. Your exceptional personal initiative, attention to detail, and commitment to the reaccreditation and manual update process was exceptional. You are hereby honored with the police commendation award with my appreciation. [applause] And then, for the other officers here, it's the same information that I just gave you, but each of them will be receiving a chief's commendation, which can be presented for an act giving evidence of selfless conduct by an employee in the performance of their duties. Your dedication and teamwork were essential to the completion of the reaccreditation and manual update process, so you are all honored with a chief's commendation with my appreciation. [applause] you all know I kept many of you updated with regard to this process and just how big it was. So, again, I have another document to read, but I'd like, for first, if I could get Records Clerk Paul McCarthy and Property and Evidence Technician Natalie Clausens to come up, please. Paul combed his hair for us tonight. "The countywide Tri-Tech Central Square Records Management System began in 2014 due to the fact several agencies were beginning to plan for the replacement of their antiquated systems. As a result, Ms. Marcia Adams, the Senior Business Analyst with Arapahoe County, began a complicated and detailed analysis of the feasibility of this project and the research to find the best company for the needs of Arapahoe County. Every law enforcement agency in Arapahoe County was contacted and made aware of the positive impacts this project could have as a countywide endeavor." The new system could eliminate redundancies, create efficiencies, allow pre-booking capabilities, save money, and improve coordination and communication. After serious deliberation and assessment, the Cherry Hills Village Police Department joined several other agencies to acquire and implement a new records management system. As the result, as this process continued, Ms. Adams coordinated meetings with Tri-Tech executives and law enforcement officials to establish and sustain all the necessary information for this vast project. Understanding our needs here in Cherry Hills Village with regard to information technology, Ms. Adams graciously volunteered to be the project manager. And I'd just like to say that she has since retired, and I can't find her. So, her boss over at the county knew what we were doing, and I told him that we certainly liked to have her here, and she and her boyfriend are out on an adventure and not answering the phone. So, when she does come back, I'll find her and we'll take her to coffee. Anyway, so to continue, "In 2018, all of the necessary paperwork and agreements were completed and the work of creating the foundation for the system and implementation began. Early in our planning, it became obvious that the Cherry Hills Village Police Department needed an individual to work closely with Ms. Adams to ensure the needs of our agency were monitored and completed. Due to his knowledge of the current system and his positive attitude about the project, Records Clerk Paul McCarthy was chosen to be our project manager to ensure this difficult, labor-intensive, multi-year effort could be completed. A support team was critical to the process and the success of this project, and Property and Evidence Technician Natalie Clausens and Support Supervisor John Reynolds stepped up to assist. They played key roles in reviewing the countless requirements, analyzing functionality, and ongoing systems review. The systems had to be user-friendly, have to be very user-friendly, efficient and effective in daily operations. Additionally, the key to the success of the implementation was the decision we made to manually transfer every record at CHVPD into the new system instead of creating a software program to convert the files. The team then added Officers Greg Gillette, Nicole Ward to assist with this task, which included over 11,000 entries of reports and property. When the transfer was completed, the savings to the city was $37,000. Another factor to implementation was the need to ensure the entire department was trained on the functions of the new system. As a result, an all-star team of individuals was created to become instructors to ensure the agency could utilize the new system to its full capabilities. This team included Records Clerk Paul McCarthy, Property and Evidence Technician Natalie Clausens, Sergeant Kurt Wood, and Officers Jennifer Callahan, Casey Furco, and Jeremy Gunther. Each of these individuals were given 92 hours of training by the staff of Tri-Tech. The group then provided 28 hours of training to every employee in the police department. And if I could just add, trying to teach police officers in an in-service setting is not the easiest thing to do, even if it's peer-to-peer. I'm so proud of what these people did and what they accomplished. It's just hard to get it all down on these pieces of paper. Anyway, "On the morning of November 5th, 2019, the Cherry Hills Village Police Department became the first agency after Arapahoe County to successfully go live with a new records management system, and as I understand it, there's still no one else that has kept up with us. We're still the only ones doing it." The team, along with experts from Tri-Tech, attended roll calls, staffed a 24/7 command center to assist users and to troubleshoot problems that anybody might have. Paul, "The department award for police commendation can be presented for an act evidencing highly professional conduct or selfless attention to duty. Your exceptional personal initiative, ingenuity, and unwavering commitment to the records management process and project will impact the department today and well into the future. You are hereby honored with the police commendation award with my sincere appreciation." [applause] Natalie. "The department award for police commendation can be presented for an act evidencing highly professional conduct or selfless dedication to duty. Your exceptional skills and unwavering commitment to the records management system project was key to the success. You are hereby honored with a police commendation award with my sincere appreciation." [applause] Oops. Well, just one second, because the rest of them are still involved. So, you heard all the names involved in this process. So, I still have Officer Callahan, Furco, Gillette, Gunther, Reynolds, Ward, and Wood. If you would all come back up here. So with regard to this part of the presentation, everyone that you're seeing here is getting a chief's commendation for the work they did, whether they were assisting with plugging in all of our records into the system, or they were train the trainers, anything like that. And one of the things that I wanted to point out to you, Council, was that you see these folks up here and a couple others that are still sitting in the audience. This is more than half of your police organization, and they did a lot of work, but sometimes it's the unseen things that go on that I don't have pieces of paper for or awards for, but every time we went to three days of training or we provided three days of training, we had to manipulate the schedule. And whether that was Commander Weathers making sure that happened, I know Sergeant Stremmels in the back there, but every time we did something like this for the duration of this project, everyone was involved, and it was just a monumental police department effort to do this. And then, while we're doing this, you know, there's other departments in our city that were saying, "Hang in there, you know, you're going to get it done," and we've got tremendous support from whether it's, you know, finance, legal, my boss putting up with me, whining that I don't think anything's ever going to get done, or Laura making sure that I do paperwork correctly. So, it truly is a group effort, but just wanted to make sure that I said those things tonight. So, Jennifer Callahan. [applause] Nicole. Casey Furco. Greg Gillette. Sergeant Wood. And last but not least, the cameraman. This is our Support Supervisor, John Reynolds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. the village, all the citizens, for all you do. We really do appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, City Manager Thorson.
Tonight, we're going to have a presentation on the I-25 Bellevue interchange. We've got the consultant and also the city of Greenwood Village is here, and I'll let them jump into this presentation and run with it, if you would.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Scott Waterman with Wilson &amp; Company. We are the consultant that was hired by the agency-sponsored Greenwood Village to recommend an improvement for the interchange at I-25 in Bellevue.
Do you have, and your address?
Our address?
Yes. Oh, is it in the record? What's your address?
For Wilson &amp; Company?
Yes.
1675 Broadway.
Thank you.
Also, thank you, Jim Thorson, for inviting us here today to present the status of our project. So we have with us Zeke Lynch with Greenwood Village as the project manager from the agency side, and then my co-project manager is John Chesser with Wilson &amp; Company as well. So we're going to try and get this to about 20 minutes, because we know you guys may have a lot of questions. So we're going to give you an overview, what the study background is, what the purpose and need for the project is. We'll go in more detail. We're going to tell you, describe our alternative screening process, which helps us arrive at the recommended improvement that we're going to talk a lot about here tonight. We're going to get into the details of that and maybe some of Cherry Hills Village concerns with that improvement, and what our next steps would be desirably to move forward with the project. So we've got many partners on this project. There are four funding partners, Arapahoe County, Sidney County of Denver, Greenwood Village, and SpyMed, and then we have other partners, there's CDOT and FHWA, because we are on an interstate and Bellevue as a state highway, and we have Dr. COG, who is the Regional Planning Organization that we have to work within. RTD, because of the light rail station and the light rail line there, has been a great partner, and of course Cherry Hills Village here as well. So we, to organize this project, we basically have two main committees. We have a technical advisory committee, which is made up of people like Jim Thorson, people on the technical side, city engineers, county engineers, project managers from each of these agencies, and their role is to help us move forward with technical recommendations and review of all of our analysis and data that we provide. When we move that data forward and we get to certain milestones, then we move to an executive committee, and the executive committee is made up with elected officials, much like Mayor Stewart, who sits on that, and we would like the executive committee to help us move forward with basically concurrence, to move a recommended improvement forward. So what we'd like to do is have our technical committee take the information back, communicate with their elected official, and come to those meetings prepared to talk about the project, and that's worked fairly well to date. So the study background, if you've driven the interchange, you understand, there's a lot of congestion out there. So the purpose of the project is to reduce the current congestion, but also to address congestion that will come 20 years from now, in 2040. We also focus on safety and traffic operations, and there is some elements out there of multimodal gaps out there, sidewalks, bike lanes, things like that, that we have to recognize as modes are changing into the future. That is also a goal of this study as a secondary, is to address those issues as well. So our needs are to address that congestion, user safety, lack of multimodal choices is what we call it. So just a project map, you guys, I think, know where the interchange is, but the project site that you see on your screens is basically the limits or the shape of what we would call our recommended improvement from the TAC right now. So how did we arrive at a recommended improvement? We've gone through a really robust alternative screening process, and this is very similar to what you do on projects like this across the state and across the country. So we have a screening bucket. So we start with a, basically just an umbrella list of options or alternatives that may be presented to resolve those purpose and need conditions that we see at the interchange. And we go through three different levels. We have Level 1, which is what we call fatal flaws. So we ask the agencies to come forward with, are there just issues with any of these big umbrella alternatives that you guys can't live with? If they're a fatal flaw for you, we'll take them off. We'll take them off the list. Then we try and get down to a smaller group of alternatives, and we call that Level 2, which is qualitative screening. Qualitative screening, we measure things against a higher level of detail that is directly related to that purpose and need we presented, and we go through a subjective qualitative screening on this smaller list of alternatives to try and arrive at a really small list. And on this project, and typical for many of projects, we arrived at three shortlist alternatives for the interchange. And then we basically take a deep dive on those three and get into high-level traffic analysis, cost analysis, impacts analysis, and so we try and measure those against each other to figure out what the best improvement is here to move forward. So this project was unique in that, if you understand the project, the location, the Quebec intersection and the Syracuse intersection, east and west of I-25. Regardless of what you do here for an interchange, if you don't resolve some issues at those two intersections, you will not find an interchange that will, basically, that will operate well. So we call those the relocation alternatives, which are the ones on the right. So we end up with a shortlist of interchanges and relocation alternatives to address the conditions at those two localized intersections, and we pair them together. So when we got down to Level 3 screening, we had three main interchange alternatives left, a diverging diamond, single-point urban interchange, and a split diamond interchange. And then the relocation alternatives to address Quebec and Syracuse were a through U-turn, which was very similar to the previous study that was done, or a furnished road in the southwest quadrant. Those two address Quebec. On the east side, we have a through U-turn to address issues at Syracuse. So, it was interesting on this project, as we got down to the interchange alternatives, diverging diamond, single-point, split diamond. Immediately when we got into the detail, the diverging diamond kind of rose to the surface as being not suitable for this location. We could not make the design work, we could not make the traffic operations work, and so we basically asked the TAC, can we just remove that for efficiency's sake from the conversation and really focus on these final two? So the single-point urban interchange and the split diamond. And so this is a really short summary of our screening matrix. When we get down to Level 3, these are all the things that we take into account when we compare these two alternatives to move forward. Traffic operations should be number one. If we're not resolving the congestion out here, it's not worth moving forward with an alternative. We compare them for safety. The safety's not just vehicular, it's bikes, peds, cars, buses, everything. Multimodal, some of these alternatives respond better to multimodal inputs. Community impacts, we look at impacts to access to existing businesses and parcels. We look at if we have to actually buy private right-of-way from those parcels, because on footprint, John, his specialty is environmental, so we look at potential environmental impacts to see if there's a difference between the two alternatives. And a big one down there is constructability. If you guys saw the I-25 Arapahoe interchange reconstructed, that one ran really well, and it still impacted traffic for a long time. So really taking that into account, how easy is it to build this improvement? How much traffic will it impact? That's a really big deal, because it could take two, three years. And then, of course, cost. These are expensive improvements, so we do cost estimates for them, and we try and compare those as well. So here's just a quick example of a diverging diamond interchange. If you've ever been up on US 36 in McCaslin in Broomfield, that's an example of a new diverging diamond, I-25 in Fillmore down in Colorado Springs is another example. You basically feel like you're driving on the wrong side of the road, but it actually has, in the right location, really good application. It just does not have the application here at Bellevue. It does not work. So let's not talk about that one too much. Single-point urban interchange, the best example here is I-25 in University, just right up the road here. That's a good example of a single point. Take your two signals that exist on a diamond interchange and pull them into one signal, and all of the traffic movements operate off that same signal. That's why it's called a single point. So it's a single point of signalization. So this was one of our final two. And then the split diamond, which we want to talk to you guys a lot about here, I'm not going to spend much time, because we've got a lot of detail on the presentation coming forward, but that was one of the final two as well. Relocation alternatives, so the issues that drive the Quebec and the Syracuse intersection are left turns, basically. So regardless of what you do at the interchange, the proximity of Quebec to the interchange, if you don't resolve these movements, you'll never find an interchange improvement here that operates well. So our shortlist relocation alternatives are a through U-turn, so you would actually proceed through the traffic light westbound without taking a left. You would do a U-turn at a new light, and then you would make a right turn to go southbound on Quebec. Same for eastbound, except that you relocate that movement to Niagara. So there is no left turn eastbound at Quebec. There's no left turn eastbound at Quebec. There's no left turn eastbound at Quebec in this. You would have to actually take care of that at Niagara and use the localized street system on the north side to accomplish any destinations in that quadrant. So then the other relocation alternative that came forward that worked fairly well is a furnished road in the, in the southwest quadrant. And this one actually eliminates all left turns at Quebec. So you don't allow any left turns to exist at Quebec, and you relocate most of those to that new signalized intersection. And it does a really good job just separating those left turns from the interchange itself, allows traffic operations at the interchange to improve that much more. On the east side, we also have a through U-turn, but it's a little bit different because this one addresses northbound and southbound lefts at the Syracuse intersection, not eastbound, westbound. So there's a heavy movement on DTC Parkway to go north, take a left and either go out west on Bellevue, south on I-25, or north on I-25. So this through U-turn, you turn, go north on DTC Parkway, take a right, go, do a U-turn through the median, and then you come back and you can either go onto I-25 or continue west on Bellevue. So getting into some of the details of the split diamond, and this is, we do this intentionally because sometimes people don't understand, without a really good signing plan, how you drive a split diamond. So a good example of a split diamond is out on I-225 at Seventeenth and Colfax, next to the new hospital complex that they've been building for how many years? So what you do, so we broke this into movements. So if you're coming southbound on I-25, you exit on the exact same exit ramp as you do today to go to Bellevue. The difference is, instead of going underneath Union and that barrier separated ramp, you actually come vertically up to a new intersection at Union that is signalized. So a new intersection gets developed there. You can make a right or a left at that signal to get onto Union to go to your destination, or you can proceed through that signal down to Bellevue and make the same right or left as you do today. Same thing southbound to get on I-25. You can get right or left from Union onto this one-way furnished road where the blue arrows are at, going southbound. And if you want to get onto I-25, you just proceed through the intersection. Bellevue right-or-lefts can also access, just as they do today. Basically the same movements northbound. One-way furnished road that connects Bellevue and Union. Same thing, so the ramp is a little bit different shape, but it enters I-25 going northbound, the same location that it does today. And then coming to and from I-225, there's an existing ramp that allows you to go southbound on I-25. That ramp also will have a new slip ramp. They would actually come up to that same signalized intersection on Union. And then you can make your decision to go to Bellevue, to Union, whatever you would like there. The opposing movement, so the red arrows out on I-25, that's the northbound I-25 two-lane exit that goes to 225. That is, that will remain. And then getting from Union or from Bellevue onto 225, there will be a slip ramp, the blue arrows, going onto the I-225 ramp as well. So Jim asked us to make sure we talk about performance improvement here because this is an expensive improvement. So we can talk about level of service, a traffic term that talks about how much delay you experience. I like to talk about how long it'll take you to travel certain distances on the corridor. So we've broken this up into Bellevue travel times, either through the interchange or to and from I-25. And then we've broken it into Union as well. So Monaco Street to DTC Boulevard eastbound, DTC Boulevard to Monaco Street westbound through the interchange. And then from Monaco Street to northbound I-25, making the lefts onto northbound I-25, and DTC Boulevard westbound to southbound I-25. So that's the measures that we have benchmarked here. So the interesting thing, on each one of these movements, the top bar there you see is what time, that's estimated time it will take to make these movements in 2040 if you do nothing to the interchange. We call that a no-build. If you don't build any improvement here, that's the time it will, we estimate it will take you. Now these are the single point and the split diamond with different relocation alternatives combined. So if you would focus on the split diamond, the bottom two bluish bars on each one of these movements. So say the top bar, in a no-build 2040 condition, it'll take 12 minutes to go westbound Bellevue from DTC Boulevard to Monaco. With our split diamond, depending on which relocation alternative, it's down to four to five minutes. So it cuts a bunch of time out of there. And then going to, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but westbound Bellevue, DTC Boulevard to get to southbound I-25, making those lefts onto the ramp, 10 and a half minutes with the split diamond improvement, and a relocation improvement applied, three and a half to four minutes. So that's an example there. And this is in the morning, the AM at the top of this graph, this is in the morning commute. The afternoon commute, this is some compelling information because you see the gray bars get worse. And typically the PM or the afternoon commute is the one that you will see typically the worst traffic operational, it's, it's where you have the most demand. It's many times similar to interchanges that exist in a high jobs district like this, where the afternoon commute typically will show you higher travel demand volumes. So westbound Bellevue, DTC Boulevard to Monaco. In the afternoon, if you do nothing, 18 minutes to travel that short distance. That gets cut more than in half with, with the improvement. And then the, the second from the bottom down there is a really compelling one, that 26 minutes if you do nothing, that really is representative of the demand volumes show us here that the traffic breaks down so much that it turns into gridlock. So our traffic model that we use to estimate these things actually just stops performing. And so we have to do things to actually get a value out of it, but it turns into basically recognized gridlock where no vehicles are moving. With the improvement, you see a lot of improvement, three and a half to five minutes for that same maneuver. So then we did the same thing on Union, which is interesting, but it's, the bars are really short because Union, if you see it out there today, it's got no traffic on it. So the travel times on there, there's very few signals. So the travel, the increase in travel times you will see is due to, we are adding two new signals with this split diamond improvement. So if you're going to sit through a signal, it's going to take you a little bit longer time. But we're talking five, six, seven, 18 minutes down on Bellevue. These are two to three minutes, one and a half to two to three minutes. So it's a, it's, it's kind of relative if you think about it. So that, that one that I just showed you was morning, this is afternoon or evening peak. So another thing that we understood from Jim, he did a very good job of communicating to us that there was some concerns for, will this improvement drive some cut-through traffic? So we wanted to address that. We've got more data and backup slides if we want to talk about when we get into question and answer. But we do an analysis with our travel demand model that is called a select link analysis. And what our traffic engineer does is they basically say, from northbound I-25 off-ramp to Bellevue, what portion of that traffic, what volume of that traffic ends up at the intersection of Quincy and Happy Canyon? To try and see if there is a difference between these two alternatives with how many vehicles will use these different routes to get there. So what you see here is, and this is from I-25, so this is just exit ramps. The no-build, if you do nothing, we estimate that there, from the off-ramp to Happy Canyon, Quincy, is about 25 vehicles. That is also representative of the split diamond alternative because the volumes, because, could have done a better job of explaining this, the, the single-point interchange does not change the ramp configuration to I-25. So the volumes that want to get to that off-ramp are the same in the no-build as they are in the single point. So... Oh, per hour. So this is in the, this is in, we, we try to identify what is the worst hour in the morning and what is the worst hour in the evening. And so that is per hour, yes. That is only the vehicles that originate on the northbound off-ramp that get to that intersection. It's not the volume on Happy Canyon and Quincy. It's only the, the volume that we predict come from the northbound off-ramp.
And that is based on prediction, is it based on any kind of actual measurement?
It is based on an industry-recognized procedure called a select link analysis within the travel demand model, where you isolate those two links and say, I want to know cars that want to start here and get to there. And it gives us an estimated volume based on where people start from and where people want to be. So the travel demand model that Dr. COG requires us to use provides all of that information within the model. It's an activity-based model, which basically does, it's better than the previous models, where it actually predicts better where people are originating from and where they're landing, where they want to be with their commute. So we use that model and the select link analysis to arrive at these numbers that are presented on this slide.
Let me ask you a question, because I don't think you show traffic coming from 225. If I'm following your arrows here, it's only the southbound I-25. You're not dealing with the traffic coming from 225 that would exit there also.
That, that is correct. I've got some backup information on question and answer. Do you, do you want to go to that information now? Because it's...
Why don't you keep going with your, I mean, I have a whole list of questions.
We can do that.
So keep going, and then we'll, we can, yeah, thank you, sorry.
So what we're seeing on, on this is that in one peak hour, we do, we show a reduction with the split diamond in traffic getting to that intersection compared to either the no-build or single point. And then in the other peak hour, we actually show it, there is more traffic. But it's on the, we estimate 12 or nine vehicles additional coming from I-25. It is a, it is a small amount based on the select link analysis. Sure. No worries.
Let me jump in and give you a moment to think a little bit. The, the Quincy and Union destination point, do we really know whether those people are Cherry Hills Village residents or heading on through to other parts?
There are a portion of these that actually are Cherry Hills Village residents, yes, there are.
Because I think we, we would, that would be normal load on the road that we would expect. I think the question we, we struggle with from time to time is, what additional traffic moving through the village on past our boundaries would be generated as a result of a change?
So we don't have data to really respond to what I'm about to say, to support it. But generally speaking, where you have severe congestion and you have people that are frustrated with their commute, that is when you get cut-through traffic because people cannot get where they start and where they want to be as easy as they would like it to happen. So if you provide an improvement that allows them to do that, the cut-through traffic typically drops dramatically because they don't, they don't need to. They don't need to provide other routes to get to where they're going. So it's recognized that if you do an improvement here, traffic will get west of the interchange easier than it does today. It'll get east of the interchange easier than it does today. That is no doubt within that improvement. So that is just basically a human nature element that is really hard to predict.
Okay, I want you, I want you to go on, yeah, continue, and I want you to get through your presentation.
Thank you. So current project status. So the technical advisory committee has really recommended this split diamond to advance to design in NEPA, but we have not gotten concurrence from the executive committee. In November, we had an executive committee meeting, and there were basically two action items that came out of that meeting. A, present here to Cherry Hills Village and basically field questions on your concerns about this, this interchange. And so that's what we're doing here tonight. And then City and County of Denver has a different focus, and they want us to take a deeper dive on multimodal improvements. So we are doing that starting Tuesday of next week, sitting down with City and County of Denver and just understanding what issues they would like to get resolved in terms of multi-modes with the split diamond. And just, we're doing a design threat, and we're going to try and figure out if we can get those resolved. Those are two action items that came out of the EC that we have been focusing on for the last three months. We have another executive committee meeting scheduled for February 28th, which is a week from Friday. So we're anxious for that as well. Here's what we, this is, this is a goal, this is what we would like to do. If we can get concurrence from EC to move something forward here, our next step is to go to the general public and have a public meeting. These are target dates. The next step in the process, we would actually enter into a formal NEPA process, National Environmental Policy Act, which is required for this interchange improvement. And it also parallels with preliminary design. So we've done conceptual design to date. We would like to move into preliminary design that gets more into the weeds on things like utilities, drainage, things like that. Funding, there is no construction funding to date for this improvement. About a month ago, CDOT called us and asked us to put together some information to get considered for a list. Executive Director Lou is putting together a new 10-year build-out list for the entire state, and they asked us to be considered for one of their lists related to transit improvements because of the light rail station there. So we actually provided that information and that the project is being considered for $50 million right now to be on that list. So construction's going to be dependent on funding. We do not have funding identified other than if this list is successful. So, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming tonight and giving this. Let's start, Councilor Blum.
I'd like to go back to the cut-through analysis where you're talking about from I-2, I-25.
Yes.
You've left off 225, which I think is a major source of traffic coming there. What's your analysis based on without that traffic?
If you would allow me, the, the, the simple answer is Quincy exists from 225. So if cut-through traffic is going to happen, it happens on Quincy. To have a vehicle actually come and go south to then go back north when they can just take a direct route along Quincy is what we believe if cut-through traffic is going to happen, it comes from, directly from DTC Boulevard and 225.
So your analysis would anticipate no cars coming from 225 that would take that route?
Not no cars. What I'm saying is, we do not believe the change in the ramp configuration at the split diamond would make that condition worse than it does today. If you will allow me, there's...
Go ahead.
I want to present, we have about four hours of data we would have loved to present to you guys here tonight. So I've got backup slides here. First, let's put this in context about what it means to go from 2020 to 2040. These, the percentages you see on this network diagram are how much traffic will increase on that link between today and 20 years from now. So say on Quincy, it's going to increase 25% across the day, 25% increase in traffic. Look down at Bellevue on the very south end of that slide, west of I-25, expected to increase 51%. That is a huge increase. So just put that as, kind of use that as the base.
And this is if, if no improvements are made?
That is, that is what the demand model from Dr. COG tells us. If no improvements are made, or if improvements are made. So this is the demand model. The demand model says people want to get from here to there, and the links allow the traffic to get from here to there. And this is the expected traffic increases on those links based on the increases in 2040.
So to make sure I understand this information correctly, looking at that tiny little stretch of Happy Canyon between Monaco and Quincy, that's a 30... of Happy Canyon between Monaco and Quincy, that's a 32% increase.
Correct.
But further north on Happy Canyon is only 18. So the difference therefore would have to be on Quincy?
I would suspect, yes.
And so, same thing here, 51% down at Bellevue, only 18% between Quebec and Monaco, so the rest of them are going south on Quebec, or nor, I guess, somewhere on Quebec.
Yeah, so again...
They're turning off at that point.
So there's a, there's another piece to that answer. So, the 2020 volumes, um, when we did our baseline or existing analysis, did not include all the development that was happening in the northwest quadrant in City and County of Denver. The interesting thing is when we pulled the Dr. Cog travel demand model, it did not include any build-out in that northwest quadrant either. So we had to work with Dr. Cog to include that master plan and all of that build-out so that it was well-represented in the forecast volumes for 2040 when we did our alternatives analysis and our traffic analysis. So our traffic engineer, Maureen, um, about a 30-year, and her specialty is travel demand. She did that and worked with Dr. Cog, and they agreed to the analysis, analysis she put forward, um, and we have those volumes represented there. So what you're seeing is that huge increase, that 51%, and see how it dies out as you go west. It's because there is a huge increase in volumes that want to get to the northwest quadrant, 2020 to 2040.
So I, that leads to a little bit more confusion. If you see the 64% then on that little stretch of Monaco, when all the surrounding streets are, you know, 18, 19, 13, and that one little stretch is 64, I guess I don't really understand...
60, so the interesting thing is 64% of a small number might not be a big number. So as you, again, I think that 64% in my mind is representative of, there's a lot of traffic even coming from the west that wants to get into that new Denver development.
Okay.
Well, let me follow up again, then, I'm sorry, Katie, on, on, uh, north, you showed some wait times, uh, but you didn't show anything for Quebec or Syracuse. How are the wait times affected by this thing, the split diamond? With the wait times, say, going north on Quebec and trying to get on I-25?
The, so, we've got some backup slides for that, too. So wait times, you're thinking about how much you're delayed when you approach the intersection? So we do that, um, we've got some analysis here for a number of different intersections for the project. This first slide that I'm looking at here, the data on the left is the morning peak hour. The data on the right is the evening peak hour. Level of service typically green is good, red is bad. So you go from level of service A, which is basically free flow, to level of service F, which is heavily congested. And, um, so existing is the left-hand column for each, each one of these. 2040 is no build, basically, if you do nothing. So you see the red develop in 2040 compared to today. When we went through and did our side-by-side alternatives analysis, this is what we really focused on, was trying to get all of these levels of service to a point where we could basically get all the Fs off of the intersection. An F, um, is 80 seconds or greater delay. It's a lot of delay compared to a free-flow condition. So, this is, this is a lot of data. What I can tell you is the split diamond compared to the single point or a no-build condition greatly improves or reduces that delay at every one of these intersections. There's some anomalies here, where one intersection might be a little bit worse than, say, the single point, but in general, the level of service and the delay combined is better with this split diamond interchange. Does that address your question?
Yeah, the, the other question, going back to the, uh, slide you had, uh, southbound I-25, it seemed to me that that would create a major shortcut for people from Quincy or Happy Canyon, uh, to allow them to get to I-25 if they had the Union.
So going to this slide here?
No, the next slide, I believe.
Getting on to, yeah.
Getting on to I-25, if they're able to access through Union there, it would seem to me that would attract a lot more traffic coming southbound on Happy Canyon or eastbound on Quincy to allow them easier access. Did you look at that at all?
So through this select link analysis, another piece of that, is it basically takes each one of these cars that start there and where they're going to end, and basically finds the least path of resistance to get there, or the shortest travel time to get to their destination. So that select link analysis does that, and that is representative of this data as well. So yes, it is, it's inherent in the data.
Thank you.
I think there are already cars that, so that's where I was a little confused with this slide. We have a traffic study that was performed that shows people cutting through, for example, off of Hamden, because it's backed up as well, cutting through on Happy Canyon and winding their way down, or even worse, you know, cutting through on Colorado and other streets before that, and weaving their way down to Bellevue to get on there. And so I, I don't know how that, when you say there's zero, um, I, that doesn't seem possible to me, that it would be zero.
I can tell you that it is the recognized technique that is used in these situations to address this question. The thing that might be relevant here is this is directly related to the to-and-from I-25 ramps. So it doesn't address, people say, like you saying on Colorado...
Well, they're cutting through to get to I-25. They're going to I-25 southbound. Hamden's just so backed up that they're cutting through to get down there, and I tend to, it would stand to reason to me that if you add another on-point, that you'll get even more people, and people already, we, that's what our traffic study shows, is that people already do that.
So describe the exact movement that you were talking, maybe I can...
You're headed, uh, eastbound on Hamden, trying to get to I-25. It's backed up clear, you know, to University. You turn south on Colorado, you turn east on Mansfield, you go over to Happy Canyon, you take Happy Canyon down to Monaco. Right now, you get on Monaco, you cut over to Bellevue, and you get on I-25 south at Bellevue.
So the on-ramp location to I-25 does not change with the split diamond?
Well, except you can get on at Union now.
You, but you still, when you get on at Union, I'm going to go back to this...
Yeah, but you, I mean, I understand that you're on like, uh, it's like Yosemite and Tamarack, but you're still getting on earlier. I mean, you know...
You're not getting on I-25 earlier.
You have another point. You're getting on to the I-25 access. You're getting access to I-25. You can turn right from Union onto an access road to I-25.
But you have to proceed all the way down and go through the Bellevue intersection as well?
Right, but still, if Bellevue is so backed up, which it often is, that's, I mean, that's a really short little thing, you know, that's, it's providing another access point. Um, I, I can't imagine that it would, it's, I can't imagine that the answer is zero. And that just seems really...
We've, we've talked about that a lot. I can tell you that that is the industry standard for doing this analysis.
Well, I can tell you that that doesn't give me a lot of confidence in the, the way that it's done when the, when the number is zero.
Yeah. So you could predict, not predict, you could actually determine exactly today's condition by doing license plate survey, traffic analysis? Predicting what would happen in the future is, is, it's more difficult.
True, but that, I guess that's my point. We have a traffic study using license plate analysis that shows people are already doing that. So to tell, to say that in 2040 with no build, that there won't be any cars doing it, isn't plausible.
Well, and I'll just mention that the zero on that slide there is for traffic coming south and then going northbound on I-25, not southbound. The southbound does show actually increased usage.
It does. So getting on south...
Oh, right, right, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Is it a bigger shortcut?
Well, if you're on Hamden, it's not, but if you're on, uh, you're...
It's a long way around.
Yeah, if you're on Bellevue, it potentially is, but...
Counsel Blum, many, Counsel Sheldon.
Thanks, Scott. I appreciate you coming in and doing this. I know it's a tough job to try to convince a whole bunch of people that this is the right plan after we've had a chance to hear about it now for a half an hour, an hour, and maybe read a little bit about it in our packet. So I know you've got a, you've got a, a lot to get your arms around here. We have a lot to get our, our arms around. Um, you know, a couple, a couple interesting things. Happens to be that tonight we're talking about our master plan later in the evening, and as we get into that master planning, I think this discussion is very germane to our master planning process for our city. We happen to have in the room Elliot Solsky from FHU, who I'm sure you know, you guys are colleagues with each other in the industry, and, um, and Britt Palmberg from Rick Engineering, who's the lead on our master plan. And so, I'm not going to suggest that they get up and opine to any of this, because they haven't probably had a whole lot of time to digest this any more than we have. But, um, I do very much agree with Katie and Al that some of these numbers, while it may be the industry standard, the way these numbers in the model, computer model generates these numbers, it's nonsensical to me. If, if on the sheet we're looking at right now, if you see the word Quincy up there and the blue arrows, I live right about where that East Stanford call-out is, right below Quincy. And so I'm doing this route personally every day. My office happens to be right on Bellevue, where your big east-west arrow is pointing to the east. That's where my office is. So I do this route every day, multiple times a day, go home for lunch, do, you know, do it all over again. So to think that there are no vehicle trips happening at these certain times of day that your zeros are calling out, I think it's, it may be what the model shows, but in my mind, it is nonsensical. Some of the other comments about some of these, um, sheets that I have is that if this is supposed to be a snapshot of the heaviest hour, if that's what I heard, if this is a, a per hour of the heaviest hour, so 7:30 to 8:30 AM or whatever that may be, and then it seems like it's usually about 4:45 to 5:45 PM, at least for me, doing that again every day, um, 60 vehicles in an hour? I think sometimes it takes me 60 vehicles to get through an intersection here, and that's, doesn't take me an hour to get home, but it's now taking me longer and longer each time I do this drive. But these numbers are projected out of 24. I'm, I'd like to see what your projections are for today. I'm, not projections, but the actual counts for today, because am I missing something here? Are you saying that 60 cars are going to go from Happy Canyon and Quincy to southbound I-25 ramps? If we do nothing, there'll be 60 cars in, in the heaviest hour of the morning?
That get from that origin to that destination?
I, I, you know, I just, um, being a guy who's driven it now for 15 years, every day, every single day, at that, at that peak rush hour time in the morning and afternoon, I can tell you that just doesn't pass my smell test. All that being said, um, I do have a couple other comments. I don't, I know we're, uh, we've got a lot of people who want to speak, but, um, are these, are these counts that your office has generated using that software count? These aren't Greenwood Village-driven data or anything like, is this Wilson's?
No, this is actually Dr. Cog's travel demand model data that we are required to use in a study like this.
Okay. Um, what happens if you take this back to your, um, if you take this back to your executive committee and you, I, I don't know what the rest of the council is going to say, but if you come back and say this council's not, they're, they're, they're less than lukewarm on this concept, what, what happens on February 28th?
I don't know what will happen, because we still are, um, working with City and County of Denver to resolve the multimodal issues. So I don't know. So, one thing you guys should know, um, when John and I started working on this job, we said, "We don't ever want that executive committee to come to a vote. We want concurrence from every agency on that, that they can at least have concurrence to move something forward, to move an improvement forward." We won't end up at a vote.
Well, I think that's, that's great, and I would, if I were on that committee, I'd like to never have to get to a vote either. I'd like to have unanimity as well. Um, you know, I, I want you to understand, uh, all of you who are here speaking on this tonight, that our, our citizens, I, I believe that our citizens are going to be very concerned about this, this issue. They're going to be concerned about the traffic in the no-build model. But I think they, I think they're going to be more concerned if, if, if you're having a casual conversation on the streets with them, even with people that have been somewhat educated on the proposal now, and we try to tell them that there's a new proposed interchange happening at Union, and try to explain this stuff to them, and explain to them that it's not going to really have a negative impact according to the Dr. Cog numbers that we're looking at here on the screen, that it's not going to have a negative impact, or it's going to be less of a negative impact than if we do nothing. I, I, I'm not going to be able to sell that to my, to my constituents, to my citizens who live up and down Quincy. I'm super concerned about it, and I think this is a, a real big deal, and so I really appreciate you guys being here, I really do, because it's raising this awareness for us. We're not trying to stop this from progressing. It, please understand, we just, I, I'm not sure, I'm going to be ready tonight, whether it's in 15 minutes or in three hours more of presentation and Q and A, I'm not sure I'm going to be ready to give you my, or this. I just, it's a lot for us to digest. Let me make a few more comments, questions, see if I've got anything else that's important, and then I'll yield the rest of my time. Um, you know, some of these slides we have not seen in our council communication, our packet that we've got from our city manager in advance of the meeting. Could we get these new slides?
Absolutely.
And I'd, I'd appreciate it if we could add, if you can go to the slides that show the bar charts of time to, to get from point A to point B, yeah?
Yes.
Could you, could you add, uh, another line, if it's not too much trouble, to, to add in their existing conditions today?
Yes.
What's it take today to get from DTC to Monaco?
We can certainly add that.
Westbound, eastbound, all those, all these different movements, if you could do it today, it'll help not only give me a little bit of a comfort level that we're, we're, I believe we're talking about the right time to get from point A to point B, because again, I'm, I'm one of those heavy drivers that does this area every day. But I think it'll also be easier for us to be able to explain and talk about with each other, explain to other people. We're going to need to do some explaining to other people, to our, our citizens about all this stuff, assuming that there is a model of this that moves forward now or next month or the following, or so, you know, so on. Um, let me just look here.
Just to let you know, that data is available, and it's part of the process. We used to actually develop the future model, so we have to calibrate the existing model. So we actually do field measurements for travel times, and we make sure the model is representing those field measurements for today before we even apply what it looks like 20 years from now. Yes.
I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Counsel Gallagher.
Uh, Scott, thank you very much for coming, and, uh, gentlemen, uh, help me understand the, uh, the construction that is taking place on Newport and Niagara at this time, big, uh, the hotel going in, does this contemplate, um, does this modeling contemplate that construction?
Yeah, so, um, when we first got the 2040 model from Dr. Cog, it didn't consider that, those improvements, not even 20 years from now. So Maureen, our traffic engineer, worked with Dr. Cog and their traffic study and their master plan to incorporate those improvements and add them into our 2040 traffic model. So we took Dr. Cog's model, added that northwest quadrant in to arrive at what we call our project demand traffic volumes. So yes, it, it does now. It didn't when we started.
Yeah, and my, my comments, they echo somewhat Dan's. This is a big, uh, this will have an impact if this goes through to this community, and it is a very difficult, um, this community will not respond well, I can, I can assure you. We, we value, you know, keeping, as, as Dan pointed out, we're going through our master plan, uh, at, uh, beginning shortly, and one of the, our characters is having a semi-rural environment. And, and we talked about cut-through traffic for years here, and it's going to continue with it, and, uh, having these, these many, uh, having more access points closer to our village is of great concern. And I do have trouble with the numbers, uh, in, in all frankness. So it's, uh, I, as a counselor sitting up here, I think there's, this is an incredibly tough sell to this community, and, and, uh, having, supporting it is very difficult at this point.
Counsel Brown.
Um, so I don't need to repeat those things.
So I don't need to repeat those things. I would say ditto and ditto. And as I mentioned, you know, we have a traffic study. The good news is that we're a small community, and so we were able with our traffic study to get pretty specific and do license plate counts because we're doing a much smaller area. And I guess I would just say that even, and that was done two years ago, three years, so you can't even call it four years ago, you can't even call it the current scenario. There was already concern about traffic, cut-through traffic, trying to get to I-25. And if I remember correctly, I want to say it was something like, that our, the company who conducted the study, their approximation was that up to 65% of the traffic on Quincy in the evening is cutting through to I-25. So that is way more than 60 cars already. So there is some issue there with how that lines up, how that data lines up with this model that causes a lot of concern and distrust about the accuracy of those predictions moving forward. But I think to back up and take it even a step higher, to understand just at a very high level, if I'm traveling on I-25 and my objective is to go east or west in the vicinity of Bellevue, and I understand that those intersections at Syracuse and Quebec, it just is an absolute mess over there. I too travel that several times a week, not every day, but I don't really understand how, if there are 100 cars that are traveling southbound on I-25 that want to go west on Bellevue, I can understand how you can clean up that intersection right at I-25, but those 100 cars have got to get on Bellevue. I don't understand how it really solves anything, because if they don't get on Bellevue, then they're going to get on Quincy. So if, by looking at these models, if we're saying, no, 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 they're not going to go to Quincy, then that means 50 of them are going to get off at Union and take Monaco down to Bellevue, and 50 of them are going to get off at Bellevue and just go west, but 100 of them are still on Bellevue by the time it gets to us. I mean, keep in mind, yes, we've talked a lot about Quincy, and I have concerns about Quincy too, but we also have people who are adjacent to Bellevue, and that's a big concern. The congestion on Bellevue is a big concern for our residents as well. So I, at a broad level, I don't really understand, if you have 1,000 cars that want to go west on Bellevue, whether they get off at Union or Bellevue, I don't understand how you're solving anything.
Thought that just popped into my head here. Along those lines, I think one of the things that have been concerning me since reading this report is if we are directing people, whether it's northbound or southbound, off to Union to alleviate some Bellevue traffic, and then either getting them back to Bellevue or taking them north on Monaco, thank you. If I'm using Waze, which half the world seems to use, and I'm at Union and I-25 and say, hey, I need to get to Littleton, Lakewood, Golden, I mean, really Sheridan, anywhere on the west side of town, at that intersection, at that moment in time, chances are, Waze is going to tell them, go north on Monaco and take a left on Happy Canyon and a left on Quincy and start heading west. Whereas if you didn't ever get them to Union and I-25, where it gives them that option of either going north on Monaco or south on Monaco to Bellevue, it would take you to I-25 and Bellevue, and then it would say, shoot west on Bellevue. In this instance, we're talking about loading people off of I-25 at Union and giving them the option of going north or south and then heading west. That's, I think, what, at least a lot of, you know, you mentioned Bellevue, I hadn't really given a whole lot of thought to Bellevue because Bellevue's our perimeter, it's a state highway, but it's true, you're right, people live on Bellevue. But Quincy's the lifeblood of our city. You need to understand that. I mean, Quincy is the main street running right through the middle of the city, and if we have to load that thing up with double the amount of cars, triple the amount of cars, that's what it seems like it should be to me, and these numbers that we're seeing again are somewhat nonsensical to me, and I'm not going to get into arguing those with you, but that electronic ability for it to tell you which way to go at that point, and we had to deal with a little bit of that Waze stuff a couple of years ago when we were dealing with some cut-through stuff, which I'd urge you guys, if you haven't already researched our roundabout discussion we had a few years ago at the city, should do that, learn a little bit, just spend a few minutes looking at our old minutes of meetings. But it's going to shoot people through our city. That scenario is going to shoot people through our city. If we have, if people have a choice to make to get westbound, to get west, to go anywhere, they're going to have a choice to make, and I bet you a lot of them end up going through Cherry Hills instead of on the outside of Cherry Hills on Bellevue.
So I guess, yeah, so I guess the broader picture, and it really sort of is a question, is I do understand how in that immediate vicinity, you may be alleviate some of the total mess that goes on at Quebec. But if all those cars end up on Bellevue...
They don't.
Then why do they go?
A lot of them is going to the job centers that immediately exist around Union, because now they travel south to Bellevue, they exist through that congestion, and then they turn and they go back north to get to those job centers. So they're not all landing just on Bellevue, continuing west or continuing east. A lot of them are going to Bellevue and then going immediately back north to get into their parking garage to go to work.
In the morning.
In the morning, yes, and the opposite in the evening, correct. And so that's why it was, I mean, we actually had one meeting with a developer in the northwest quadrant, and we sat in his conference room, and we didn't watch a car go by on Union for 45 seconds.
No, I know. Union's fabulous. It's the only way to get anywhere.
So when we had, when we had our public meeting, we had residents, I don't know where they reside, we had residents saying, why aren't you guys thinking about Union? Why are you not thinking about Union? Nobody uses it. People use it to actually divert. So you want to talk diversion? People to get on the northbound I-25 go west, they come from westbound Bellevue, they go north on Monaco, east on Union, south on Syracuse, take a right to go back west and then get on the on-ramp there, and they say that will take them less time than if they go through the interchange.
Oh, I can believe it. I can believe it. I mean, back in the day, those streets didn't go anywhere, all like Niagara, although they, you couldn't go that way. And there are times where, you know, between Hampden and Bellevue, we really have Hampden, Bellevue, and Quincy. Those are our access points for people who live in Cherry Hills Village. There are times where Union is the only way to get out of here. Quincy to Union is the only way to get out of here. Hampden is backed up, you know, for forever, and Bellevue, you know, Bellevue is, that interchange is terrible, but Bellevue's terrible. And so I don't really know, and it's, the current conditions are already bad, and I know that that's not 100%, because it's so backed up, even at university and those places, it can't all be attributable to people who live in that new development right there and work there, because that wasn't even there. So I just agree. I think that Dan's suggestion of going back and looking at the minutes from those meetings, I think that will give you a sense for what the reaction of this community is going to be, and that will be very informative. And I think will give you a sense of, you know, where that leaves us.
Katie, let me just follow up on, if you look at the northbound entrance, Bellevue to northbound I-25, have you addressed anything on the Quebec northbound to get access I-25? Because a lot of those people, and I deal with that every day, cut through, they do cut through to go up to Hampton or something to get on I-25 then. Have you addressed that? And do you have any performance improvement for northbound Quebec accessing I-25, like the chart you have up there now?
I don't have, I don't have that direct travel time. I actually have it in backup data on my hard drive here. We looked at travel times there as well. Today, like if you're going northbound Quebec, eastbound Bellevue, northbound on-ramp, is that the movement you're?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we do have some data.
Very popular movement.
So will we be able to access that data also on the?
We can, yes, we can make it available, absolutely.
Because they do also cut through, they go up to Monaco and cut through that way.
Yeah, well, because you can't turn right, so sometimes, and in fact, you know, I guess one thing that also isn't potentially contemplated that would get potentially worse with Union as well, is that Waze, so I live on, closer to the Hampden side of the village, when I'm trying to get to 225, Waze tells me at 5 o'clock in the evening to go down to Bellevue, get off at Bellevue, get back on, and get on I-25 that way. So if you create yet another shortcut around the 225, I-25 south to 225 north gets very backed up in the evenings, and now you'll be creating an additional U-turn shortcut loop around that.
So I want to acknowledge Jim has been bringing these concerns to us for quite some time. So he's done a really good job of letting us know that these concerns are going to be there, this is where the conversation's going to go with this council. And so we've pushed our traffic folks quite a bit to relook at the data and to answer some of these questions and really give us an understanding. You mentioned big picture. What is going on here? You know, give me the gut feeling of why people are doing this. And what I can tell you is a couple of different things. When we looked at 2040, the issues at this interchange are different than they are today. The Quebec movement that you mentioned today is huge, that's still a big deal, but it's not the biggest deal in 2040. The TOD development that Denver's doing in the northwest quadrant is one of the biggest deals affecting traffic in this whole area in 2040 that you don't see the effects of near as much today, to the point that it broke down the model for a number of different movements. So one of the reasons the split diamond came out to be an advantage for looking at this interchange complex as a whole, is as you take that percentage of people that want to get to the DOD, the development in northwest quadrant, and you give them another access point to get there, it takes that percentage of people off of Bellevue and it puts them on Union, and those folks aren't necessarily needing to get to Bellevue and go west, they want to be in that development. That's their destination. Our origin destination data tells us that movement into that development is massive. It broke everything down. By moving that percentage of people up to Union and off of Bellevue, it got those people to their destination more efficiently. It also opened up Bellevue to operate quite a bit better in the model than it would with the other alternatives we were looking at, because you have that traffic, that volume of traffic that's moved up now off of Bellevue. So if Bellevue's operating more efficiently, that movement northbound Quebec to northbound I-25, you're not dealing with all the people trying to get to the development in 2040. It's hard to reconcile that today because we don't have that as much. I know you see it a little bit with those folks getting there, with the development that's going on, it's massive, there's so many more people going there. It frees up some of these other movements that we were talking about. If you look at improving this interchange and you try to address Bellevue, where everybody's using Bellevue to access where they want to go, whether it's the development or west on Bellevue or to the retail, it can't handle it. And so being able to move this traffic up to Union freed up Bellevue to operate a lot more efficiency without needing improvements necessarily to Bellevue itself in 2040. But the idea was we've got to get those folks that are using Bellevue to access that development because there's no other option off of Bellevue, or Bellevue can't operate at all.
Well, so with that in mind, thank you for that. That makes sense. With that in mind, can you go back to the, I think it's the previous slide or maybe two, where it's, it's not the Union, this one? So I hear what you're saying, and these no-build things, you know, obviously are terrible. I guess what I'd like to point out is that I do see that the split diamond has perhaps the most improvement in some cases, but the other options have some fairly significant improvements too.
Correct.
And so that kind of goes back to the matrix summary and the weighting of the criteria, and I know that Jim has had some communications about these things too. I guess what I would say is that increase, from your perspective, and I think from a lot of people's perspective, you would think of increased access as being a very good thing. Don't think that's the way that people in this community would see that.
Yep.
And keeping traffic flowing is a good thing in your context, but when it's flowing through at higher speeds, right in front of their house in an incredibly residential area, that's not a good thing. So when I look at this matrix comparison, you know, while I understand where these things have landed where they would, you don't know that people in this community would weight those as heavily, and particularly when you start to talk about, you know, how easy it is to build. You know, frankly, it's going to be really painful if widening Quincy ever becomes an issue in Cherry Hills Village. So I think that, you know, their concerns are more about those impacts as it kind of directly relates to our community, and we understand that it might make it a little more challenging, but, you know, Denver has approved all of that development.
And the irony is, and the irony is, they didn't have to put in any money towards any of these improvements.
I know, I know, and I kind of feel like, you know, that the majority of the burden should be in that area. So, did you, it sounded like you wanted to say something?
You bring up an excellent point about the matrix. I wonder if we could go back to that slide real quick. It's important to note the scale of what we're talking about with that matrix slide, and that everybody, every community, Greenwood Village, Rappel County, everybody would look at that from their particular angle.
Right.
This is designed to be universal, project-wide, not taking any weighting into consideration. There's no weighting of those pieces. How those evaluation criteria were developed, I think it's important to understand, as a TAC, as the whole TAC group got together and looked at the purpose and need, this is the criteria with which everybody got together and agreed, we'd like to rate our alternatives against this particular criteria. And everybody has a piece of that that's more important than, to them, than maybe it is to the overall and to things like that. So it's important to note that the context is universal. Our charge as a project team and as a technical advisory committee and an executive committee is to look at how to improve the overall complex of the Bellevue interchange. That is, that was the scope of our effort, the analysis of our effort. Within that, there are individual concerns and issues that we've been working through with a lot of the different communities. Again, Jim's been great about bringing up, you know, the concerns that you guys would have. This matches basically exactly what he's been telling us that the conversation would be like. And one of the things we've committed to doing is helping you in the conversation with your constituents, understand what this project was, what the purpose is, what the improvements are, and to address the concerns that you know that they're going to have. So we've committed that to Jim, and we'll make the same commitment to you guys. If there's pieces of data that we can identify to help that conversation, that's what we're here for. We, you know, our goal is to make an improvement here, not to the detriment of any one agency though, any one community. And it's important to us that that's understood. And so if there are things, as you guys are looking at the data, we send you the additional slides, the backup data, that you have more questions and would like to have that engagement and understanding and help us, or have us help you with the messaging with your community and understand how to help you with that messaging, that's what we're here for.
You know, I'd love to know how, because we, this matrix summary, we went through this very quickly. What was your thinking, and how close was the vote, so to speak, between the SPUI and the split diamond? Talk about that.
Yeah, so this is representative of about eight or 10 pages of 11 by 17 full of data. So traffic operations is two pages of that by itself. So there are eight to 10 different metrics that make up traffic operations that were all looked at. You pull out any one of those, and you can say, okay, this does a story but doesn't tell the whole story. You got to look at everything together. And so you're right, this is extremely short summary. There's a ton of data that went into getting to this piece. Now, for the difference between, take traffic operations, the slight lean towards the split diamond, how close is that? It depends on which of the matrix evaluation criteria you're looking at, which of the pieces within traffic operations. You're like, some lean towards the SPUI, some lean towards the split diamond. The ones that really came out... The ones that really came out ahead or really made some of the biggest difference between the split diamond and the SPUI come down to the points that are, that are made on the slide here. It's not everything, but it's some of the bigger pieces. The reality is, the split diamond can be phased. There is no phasing option with the SPUI. The SPUI goes in all at once or it doesn't go in at all. There's no phasing opportunity with that. It's an all-in type of alternative. With the split diamond, you can do things on the west side, you can do things on the east side, there's different ways to split that up. And that's why CDOT asked in their, in their request for the, the long-term plan, that we look at the, at the split diamond, what can you do with different amounts of money if they commit? How could you phase the project based on money that's available? That was a huge piece to this conversation. Constructability is a big piece. The SPUI requires the replacement of the bridge over I-25, or the I-25 bridge over Bellevue. CDOT does not want to replace that bridge, it's a functionally sufficient bridge, they don't want to touch it. It's, it's, it doesn't make sense for them. So for CDOT, when they look at this slide, that's a huge piece that, that isn't necessary in their minds, the SPUI would require replacement of that structure, the split diamond wouldn't. There's, there's a lot of different pieces like that, but there are certain ones that came out that made a big difference. Another one on traffic operations I think is really important is latent demand, unserved demand. The model that we're looking at and a lot of the discussion that Scott looked at, this is people who can make it into the model. In the split diamond, there are thousands of people who don't even make it into the model because it's congested, it breaks down. They can't, can't be served by that piece. In the split diamond...
Yeah.
SPUIs.
That's correct. In the split diamond, that number is incredibly less. The split diamond is serving more people. So Scott, I don't know if you can speak to this, but it's that last row on this, in this graphic that we're looking at now, the split diamond is able to serve more people, it's able to get more people where they want to go. I know that that makes sense for a lot of the stakeholders that we have, however, to your point, if they're using local roads to get there, doesn't work for you. So it's up to us to take a look at that unserved demand and, and make Bellevue interchange operate as best that it can so that people don't need to use those side roads. It's one of the biggest pieces that we've been talking with Jim about quite a bit, but I mean, there's, there's people with the, with the SPUI that can't make it into the model and even be served by the improvement. And, and the split diamond, the numbers are, are quite a bit less. So I hope that answers your question. It's, it, there's so much data that goes into it, but there are a few things that tipped us off.
Yeah, it would have been really helpful in our, had we known that right up front, that what drives this is, just your illustration, we're going to have to replace the, the construction cost and of, of this, of the, of the SPUI is just overwhelming compared to the split diamond model. It would have been...
So that is, that's incorrect. They're both almost, they're very representative, almost identical costs.
Yeah.
They just reconstruct different things.
The SPUI needs, the SPUI needs to all be built at once.
Right, right, from a, from a, I don't know.
From a feasibility point of view, you're not, so to give you guys an idea, everything in engineering costs, construction costs, administration costs, buying right-of-ways, we assume we're going to relocate utilities, all of that included, we're talking about a hundred million dollars for both of these improvements. So the advantage to the split diamond is you can break that up into like three phases and actually build and only spend 50 million, say, I know that sounds, only spend 50 million. The, the single point, you're, you're all in at a hundred million or you're not building anything. So that's the advantage to go into the split diamond is you can, John and I have always talked about this, you, you've got to be able to build this in pieces and make sure you're building towards that 2040 improvement without wasting money. So that's another advantage of the split diamond.
Counselor Wheel.
Yeah, a couple, question to, of clarification. You have three different versions of split diamond and this chart just happens to be up. Which are you advocating?
So we don't know. So the, the relocation alternatives on the west side, there are two distinct alternatives that allow better operations at the interchange, the median U-turn and the frontage road. And we have not advocated for either one of those relocation alternatives. We would like to set them side by side and see what you get out of each one of them because they have distinct impacts that are different between those. And one's more expensive than the other. And the median U-turn was a, a result of the previous study and it wasn't received very well. So moving forward with something like that, we know we got challenges there anyways.
So it's, it's a really good point. I wanted to make sure that that's clear. The TAC recommendation to the EC was for the split diamond interchange alternative and then advancing both the median U-turn and the frontage road relocation options to be vetted more in, in further design. We're at conceptual design right now. There are questions that we can't answer until we get into preliminary design on those two pieces. So the recommendation was split diamond as the interchange alternative, advance both of the intersection relocation alternatives for, for further analysis and design to see which one would have the best.
Dan had asked for the slides that weren't in the package. Backup slides, would I regret asking for those? I don't know how voluminous they are.
He does like to read though, I'll see him.
No, there's, we can provide whatever data we have available, yes. And there's four hours of it.
Okay. Well, that, that's, that's helpful. And I guess I, I would like to offer some words of encouragement. I think, you know, anybody that's sat in that traffic often, as I have, it's frustrating. I really understand firsthand the hesitation that the, or the displeasure that the village has about cut-through traffic and all of that. But, but at the same time, I think, you know, if we can make the arteries and the main intersections more fluid, get more cars, have less queues, I don't find anything particularly semi-rural about a line of, you know, 100 cars that are waiting and waiting and waiting to, and spewing exhaust all the while and burning fuel and so on. So, so I think if we can kind of contain the flows and the improvements and not end up with unintended consequences, if you will, of, of big bunches of traffic starting to move through the city, you know, rather than around the city, you know, that's good, that's good. I mean, keep rocking.
Mayor, I've got one quick question.
Yes.
Scott, thank you for your presentation, but could you tell me, I guess this is a comment question, but the split diamond, it has a median U-turn, it has a frontage road option. What happens if you get the 50 million? Does that guarantee that one of those options go in? Because I think the traffic numbers are really reliant on one of those options going in, whether it's a frontage road or not, because I think the model tends to deviate from what was shown if those frontage road, for example, isn't put in.
So I can tell you, we have not done like iterative traffic analysis on what might be a $50 million improvement and how would that perform for how many years before we would start to see breakdowns in traffic again? We have not done that analysis. We could do that analysis, but we have not done that to date. I can tell you, CDOT gave us 18 hours to respond to that request for $50 million and we had been thinking about it, so we had the, the phasing diagrams and them forward and everything. So what we determined out of that was basically the west side of the interchange, the ramps could be built in one phase, the relocation alternatives on Bellevue could be built in a different phase, and then the east side of the interchange, the ramp and frontage road system on the east side of the interchange could be built in another phase. So three distinct phases versus the single point, it's really about the interchange and maybe the relocation.
Well, I, I think that's a, thanks for asking that question, Jim, because that, that does raise a really big concern for me, that if you had a ramp at Union and a ramp at Bellevue, but no way to get through that Quebec intersection, I think a lot more people are going to take Union. If they're not going to Quebec, they're going to take Union to Monaco. And yeah, so I, for me, I think that that would almost, like you'd have to have one with the other. I mean, I don't know that I can get behind any of it, but I, I would be very concerned about just building a ramp at Union and not doing anything to improve the traffic on Bellevue. Because that, that's really, this, that's what all of this hinges on, and that goes back to my bigger point, which is that if you can keep the arteries moving, to Randy's point, then people stay on the arteries and that's great. But that's not the only problem on Bellevue. And so Bellevue's not, Bellevue's not going to move just by fixing this one little, I mean, it's one big intersection, right? You're still going to have problems on Bellevue. So you, you know, I mean, until you can address all that, people are still going to be looking for ways. And when you put even allow a greater number of cars to get off there, I think, you know, and I understand models, I'm, I'm an engineer by training as well, and I do have a lot, I understand where they come from, but it just, I can't see how that could possibly not end up in a lot more traffic down Quincy. So anyway.
Do you mind?
Go ahead. Counselor Sheldon.
I know you're trying to wrap it.
You're here, you won't get another chance.
Well, that's just the thing. I wanted to make sure that before you close this discussion up, that I, I am able to say this. Again, appreciate you being here. I'm concerned that your next meeting with your executive committee is in 10 days and that you're hoping to get out of a recommendation from, get a recommendation out of them at that point or, or an approval to move forward at some level with this, with this option. I will, it sounds like we're not, you're not going to get a consensus in any way and we're not, it's not on our agenda to give you, to make any kind of motion or of support or otherwise tonight, but I, I think where you're at right now is probably hearing that there's going to be a fair amount of contentiousness. While I think we all would like to see some improvements happen, I for one would like to, to understand them maybe a little bit more before I could get my, you know, get behind them. The problem with that is that your clock is on the field. You're trying to make some decisions here, we're seeing you 10 days before your presentation to the executive committee. And maybe that's a flaw in the scheduling how we are right now and that we should have been hearing from you guys months ago, but whatever it is, we are where we are. I, I want to leave you with one final thought. Don't underestimate our citizens' resolve. So while we may not be a financial stakeholder in this project, we may not be paying any of this bill for design or construction, our residents will not go quietly if they don't like something they're seeing or hearing. Okay? Don't know that it matters. We've had it shoved down our throats before, airport's done it, we've, we've had different things come up and we just take, take it like, you know, we take the brunt of it. But be assured that this will require on your part a bunch of public outreach for our citizens if you're interested in having the Cherry Hills Village citizens support this project. You might be able to get there. I'm, I'm feeling more comfortable today than I was two hours ago, but still not comfortable, if, if, if that helps at all. So just keep that in mind. This is a, this is going to be a, a public outreach process for you guys if, if you do move forward with this design without overwhelming consent, stakeholder consent here or non-stakeholder consent as it may be. I would just urge you to be aware that you're going to, you're going to be hearing from some citizens.
Do you want to comment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Thanks so much for hosting us. Really appreciate it. And along those same lines, I appreciate you letting us know those specifics about how we should really be moving forward as a team. And we were purposeful on how we arranged this presentation tonight because we didn't want, nor is it, a Greenwood Village-driven process. And so I certainly could have given the presentation that Scott gave, but we chose not to structure it in that way. What we would like to go forward with leaving this meeting, we're not asking for a decision from any, from any one of you tonight, but what we'd like to go forward with is a goal to have a public meeting. In order to have that public meeting, we really do want to have an alternative that we can present as, you know, it's not, doesn't have all the elements that all the stakeholders would want, but we think it's the best regional improvement for the interchange complex as a whole. And take that before the public and see what kind of reaction we get. And so at that point, then we can gauge a little bit better on how we all collectively move forward. And that's not just Cherry Hills Village residents, that's City of County of Denver and Greenwood Village and Rappahoe County and all the other stakeholders that, you know, either are directly affected by or commute through this interchange on a daily basis.
I, I might suggest that if you're going to do that, you might want to consider having one that's focused particularly on Cherry Hills Village, if, if you can. Don't know how many are in your contract to have, you know, of these, of these meetings to host, but you know, the more attention you pay to our citizens, the more they'll probably be able to get behind you in some form or fashion. And if it's just a big broadly broadcast meeting held, you know, at, either at Greenwood Village, which probably wouldn't be a big enough venue to hold that many people, or wherever you may have it, you may not get Cherry Hills Village folks that are all that dialed in to what the issue is. If you were to hold a meeting and publish it for a, a meeting for the village residents to talk about how the impacts will be to the village and go through this, and I would urge you to relook at some of your numbers, I'll, I know you, they're all coming from your computer modeling, but you might, might want to consider doing that for, for our citizens in particular. I think it might go a long way.
And I'll just add a couple of questions. I, I actually, most of my questions have been answered, but I wanted to, there's one, you asked for one figure, that might, or figures that might help. And one would, would be the, the amount that the Northwest development is contributing to the increase for us. Because actually, this is not a new issue. I was on council a long time ago and we said, oh my God, when they build out that Northwest quadrant, what are we going to do? I mean, so, and finally, it's coming. And I think, you know, what has to happen is our citizens and residents need to come to grip with that, that it's coming now. And by 2040, it's going to be a full build-out and, and we're going to have traffic impacts because of that. Big ones, because of that, that additional traffic. And the question is, what do you do about it? I mean, if we do nothing, it, it, it may be a lot worse than the alternatives. So, you know, I think your point is, Counselor Sheldon's point is well-taken though, that there has to be education about what this goes, because the initial reaction of everybody is going to be, you open up Union, you're going to bring it straight down Quincy. I mean, that's what everybody's reaction is initially. They have to really understand that this is really fixing the entire intersection so it works better, which will in the end then stop people from having, being forced to use cut-through traffic and, and through the, through the center of the village. That's the message. It's not an easy one to, to, to convey. So, but I, I think that information about how much that Northwest quadrant would impact is, you know, those percentage figures you had for the increase in 2040, how much of that comes from the Northwest? Because that's coming regardless. And I, you know, you know it and you, you can see what's going to happen. That's a high-density, you know, development.
I don't think it's going to be 2040, it needs to be much sooner too.
Could be, yeah, yeah. So like that, I, that piece of information would be helpful to us, to me. And again, was there any other questions? Thank you very much. You've taken more than 20 minutes, but we really appreciate that you did spend more than 20 minutes with us and explained it to us. Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the agenda, audience participation. Did we have any sign-ups? We have no sign-ups. Anybody wish to speak that didn't sign up? Hearing none, will reports, city commissions? No? Okay. Consent agenda, items 7A and B to have a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Moving on to unfinished business, item 9A, which is a public hearing on Council Bill One, Series 2020, repealing and reenacting Articles 1 through 8 of Chapter 18 in Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code. This is a second and final reading and Mr. Kramer?
This is the second reading for the building codes. And it is scheduled, the first reading occurred, the chief building official presented for the updated series of codes that are going to replace the existing with a few amendments. There was discussion in the, in the public hearing was, is scheduled for this. The primary purpose of tonight is for the public hearing for public input. So staff is available for any questions you might have.
Any questions first from counsel before I open the public hearing? No? Okay, I'll open the public hearing at 8:20. Would anybody like to be heard on Council Bill One? We have no sign-ups, so unless there's, since there's no one appearing to speak, I will close the public hearing at 8:20. close the public hearing at 8:21. Now, what's the pleasure of council? Is there a motion?
I move to approve Council Bill 1, Series 2020, on second and final reading, repealing and reenacting Articles 1 through 12 of and adding a new Article 13 to Chapter 18 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning building regulations, adopting by reference with certain amendments, the 2018 International Building Code, the 2018 International Existing Building Code, the 2018 International Residential Code, the 2015 Green Building Standard, the 2018 International Mechanical Code, the 2018 International Plumbing Code, the 2018 International Fuel Gas Code, the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, the 2017 National Electrical Code, and the 2018 International Fire Code, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and providing penalties for violation thereof.
Second.
A motion and second, uh, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Wheel?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Gallagher?
Yes.
Counsel Sheldon?
Yes.
Counsel Blum?
Yes.
Agenda item 9A passes unanimously. Move on to Agenda Item 9B, Council Bill 2, Series 2020, amending Sections 20-2-20 and 20-2-130 of the Municipal Code concerning wireless telecommunication facilities. This is on first reading, having been continued from February 4th meeting. And Mr. Kramer?
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, as the mayor mentioned, this is a continuation of the first reading that took place on February the 4th. Uh, the purpose of this amendment, uh, is to, uh, help provide relief to, to the ability for towers to go above a certain height within public property. The current standard is a 40-foot cap, uh, with no ability to extend the height when all of the wireless telecommunication facilities were moved into a brand-new Chapter 20. As we've discussed multiple times, uh, the, the issue is continuously, uh, evolving. The technology's evolving and the federal regulations are evolving. And, um, Kathy and I have been in contact, uh, a little bit with Ken Feldman. Um, I think there are, uh, we will not, this will probably not be the last time we have to come before council with additional changes to Chapter 20, just because the nature of the field is evolving so quickly. So on February 4th, just as a quick reminder, there were two proposed amendments. Uh, the first was related to, uh, 20-2-20, Sub B, Sub 3, related to, uh, a section of the code that talks about the need that applicants need to show in their, uh, application, especially for new towers. There was a word demonstrate that was missing. It is a helpful section though to revisit because it does show, uh, some of the other requirements that applicants are required to do, um, uh, through the process, uh, that relates to the Second Amendment, uh, regarding tower height. So, as I mentioned, the current limit to tower height is 40 feet. Staff is recommending that there is some form of relief available for that tower height provision. Uh, when Chapter 20 was created, the ability to apply for a variance through the Board of Adjustment no longer exists. So when this was discussed on February 4th, council had some concerns, uh, regarding the, the, uh, standards for approving this tower height increase. Um, so staff has, uh, taken that and gone back and done a little bit more work to try and, uh, maybe hit the, closer to the mark on what council's looking for. As a little bit of context, uh, we didn't talk too much last time about some of the other sections that exist in Chapter 20 that help shape the overall decision-making that goes into the approval of new facilities, specifically 20-2-20 and 20-2-30 that talk about need and tower location. Um, I included those in the staff memo, so, in full, so that, uh, council could review those. Um, they do help shape the overall decision-making process that relates to this so that it's not just simply, um, you know, a simple decision to, uh, extend a tower above 40 feet and, you know, it, uh, council has no say. It, uh, it's really part of a puzzle. It's one piece of an overall puzzle that council or the director would use to make a determination to approve, uh, a, a specific tower. There was also an email that was sent by Verizon representatives to city council shortly before, uh, the February 4th, the February 4th meeting. Um, I had a opportunity to speak with Verizon representatives about their request. Uh, we had a good, uh, uh, conversation about the purpose and the scope of this particular amendment. They were unaware that this was really a more limited, uh, scope, and we talked about, uh, the types of input, public input that we would really have to have to have a larger discussion about private property, and it has a far greater complexity, uh, than just simply the public. And I think they appreciated that. Um, you know, they asked actually what else we're doing in some of the other parts of the code based on recent, uh, changes and some of the federal rules. Um, and so they recognized that we will probably also need to revisit some of the other parts of the code moving forward, um, you know, possibly even later this year. And so they just requested that when we do that, if we could include them as a stakeholder, which I assured them we absolutely would. So they were, uh, perfectly understanding of the process we're going through now. I mentioned that the, uh, other provisions, that's the 20-2-120B, it also requires that, um, it gets at the underlying principle of design for towers in Cherry Hills Village. This was done the last time the code was updated, and it really gives a preference for co-location. Um, it's, it talks about that both in the, uh, Sub A and also Sub B. The towers shall be designed to allow for co-location to the maximum extent possible. I know that there is some consideration that the specific context might require different heights based on the, the conditions that are surrounding it. I, I, and I completely recognize that. The bigger picture conversation about whether or not co-location should be the desired outcome is a bigger picture conversation, but I would offer to you that the specific limited scope amendment that is before council tonight gives council or the director the opportunity to consider some of those site-specific considerations. With the cap right now at 40 feet, there is no ability to consider some of those other site-specific considerations. So staff worked on, uh, some additional criteria that were not present on the February 4th meeting. Um, you'll see a lot of blue on this particular slide. Those are the, uh, the, uh, suggested enhancements or amendments from the February 4th version. And, um, in essence, there's really two main categories of additions that staff is proposing. One is that the ability to go above 40 feet is limited to the state highway corridors. So this isn't just any right-of-way. This is not Quincy, uh, this is not, uh, uh, you know, Happy Canyon, this is only for state highway corridors. Um, and second, there are four additional criteria, uh, that, uh, an applicant would have to show and would have to meet to the satisfaction of a decision-maker, whether it's city council or the director, um, to show that, that they would be granted that discretionary approval to go above 40 feet. There is a cap still at 70 feet. That is different than the previous code where you could apply for a variance at any height. Uh, you could apply to go above 70 feet before. So with this new amendment, it does then present a, a top-end cap of 70 feet in any scenario. So those are the primary changes that were made since the February 4th hearing. Um, staff is available for any questions you might have.
Okay. Counsel Wheel?
Sure. Well, I'll hold off on my, my questions about co-location versus
Sure.
... height, uh, because I think you've, you've said, well, you've got some ways to balance that and, and it's not automatic, and that's good. I did, as, as we talked earlier today, I did have a, a concern about the term decision-maker. I think it's a little more vague than city or applicant, you know? And, and most of the code has that kind of language in it as opposed to decision-maker. I mean, in a sense, you've got a decision to be made and you've got two parties on either side and they're both decision-makers, and we haven't defined it as I, as I recall in the, uh, specifically in the text. So maybe consider, you know, modifying that to somehow and that might, you know, call it city or call it, uh, city council or city manager as appropriate, or, you know, something like that.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, yes, of course.
Um, I had a chance to speak with the, uh, city attorney today about that issue. There are multiple other sections within Chapter 20 that do reference decision-maker. However, they do reference designated decision-maker as opposed to just decision-maker. Um, and because it, uh, in the standardized process section of, of Chapter 20, standardized decision-maker is called out as either, depending on which process it is, either the city council or the director. And so I think our recommendation is that we do in fact, uh, make a recommendation to amend, uh, the word decision-maker on there to add designated beforehand, to be more consistent with the term throughout Chapter 20.
Okay. And, and we're reading excerpts, so it's a little hard
Understood. Completely understand.
But, uh, that can work.
I think it was an excellent catch.
Okay. That's all I have.
Counsel Brown?
Um, I didn't really have any questions. I do think that the limiting the, the taller, um, towers to right-of-way adjacent to state highways addresses a lot of the concerns that I had about a 70-foot pole, you know, at Quincy in Colorado, which would just, uh, I mean, I think I can see them, you know, more in those areas, uh, in general, so I think that helps me. Thank you.
Counsel Gallagher?
The only question I'd have, Chris, is if we get an application in and are we going to be able, will council ultimately be able to make a decision on a potentially contentious, um, application for a particular site?
Yes, especially as it relates to these additional criteria that you see here to, today. It, in practice, what would happen is that an applicant would submit an application, let's say for a new tower, but then they would also then apply with additional materials to say that we would like a tower, we would like to go above 40 feet. So council would have the opportunity to approve a tower, but deny the tower height extension. Based on the criteria that exists here, um, that's on top of all the other standards, the 20-2-20, 20-2-30, you could use those to approve the tower itself, but then deny the additional height. Or it could be that you approve it for 15 feet and not 30. It's discretionary for council at that point.
Great. Thank you.
Counsel Sheldon?
Thanks, Chris. So I've been struggling a little bit with this issue now for the last couple of meetings, as you all know, and, um, I, I think the concern being that Bellevue, let's use Bellevue or University, let's use University Boulevard as an example. Randy, your neighborhood, there's nothing to say that an applicant couldn't come in and seek approval for a 70-foot tower outside of one of your neighbors who backs up on, in Cherry Hills Farm to University Boulevard, or Bellevue for that matter, or in Buell on, on Hamden, or, you know? But I guess where I've kind of come to land on this is that if it is purely an additive elective process for us, that we can say, yes, we're going to allow you to go above 40 at 42 feet, 45, 50, 55, 60, 70, whatever that number is, and we have the absolute unequivocal discretion to say no to any of those requests, I, I think I'm okay with this. I know last, two weeks ago when we were here last, we decided to, nobody wanted to move on this issue because we weren't, none of us really seemed comfortable with it. Um, I, I think that these additions are good, um, that staff has added into, into 20-2-130. I think it gives me a little bit more comfort level, and adding the ability for that decision-maker, designated or otherwise, assuming it's a city personnel, um, or, or it could be council or a staff member, uh, I, I think I've gotten behind this.
Counsel Blum?
Um, I appreciate that, Chris. I would concur with Dan. I think that was a good catch because I had that circled also on the designated maker. My question really relates to the fact that if, if behind Randy's house or wherever, uh, they put up a 70-foot, uh, tower, we approve it, and later it interferes with, for example, solar access. Do we have any remedies to deal with that then, or is this a permanent, once it's approved, it's in and it's fixed?
Obviously, there's no absolutes, and we're going to be working with another operator on, just as an example here, about trying to relocate a tower on city, remember, this is just for, uh, public property. Um, so are there opportunities to make changes later? Yes. Is it extremely much more difficult to do after the approval? Obviously, right? Uh, but is it, is it impossible? No, we're, we're hopefully going to work with an operator to do that exact thing here. Uh, but to the extent that we would want to work out through the initial approval process, uh, optimal height that works for everyone, that's always the desired outcome.
Thank you.
And, and what are the usual terms for this? All these have a term of years for these licenses? What, what's, what's this one, for example?
Yeah, I, I think for the most part, those terms are negotiated, um, because they interface with leases, uh, that they sometimes will have at the time with specific carriers. So I know that when, uh, the, and I'm going to look to Jay a little bit here, but that when the SAO license agreement was set up, it does allow for some negotiations for the individual, that, that's a small cell, but it's, it's an example of how this might work with a, an application through Chapter 20. Does that sound accurate to you? Here.
I'll, I'll make a couple of distinctions. Usually we have lease terms when it's on, on city property, not city right-of-way.
Yes.
Um, on city right-of-way, we do have terms, if they abandon it, they have to get rid of it, those type of things. But, uh, generally, we would only have the lease terms if it's on a city-owned piece of property.
Right. Which this one is.
Correct.
That's why we have that.
Correct.
Jay, Jay?
So, so yes, if it was on C dot right-of-way, that would be their lease. Um, and there's no typical for those. It's, they try to extend those as long as they can because of their investment in the, um, equipment itself. And those are, those would be a little harder to get that to move than, say, a small cell on the right-of-way, which we can move it and have moved at any time.
Or, or on city-owned property.
City-owned property.
Yeah.
I think one more, one more point I'd like to make is that, um, the, um, the likelihood of me getting my arms around a 70-foot structure in this city anywhere is pretty minimal right now, based on the technology that's out there and their ability to screen. I'm just not there. I just don't think it exists that I could sit there and say, hey, Russell, here's the reason why we're putting it right outside your bedroom window on Hamden. I know that it does, it's kind of an eyesore for you, but it's going to improve the coverage for the betterment of the community. I, that's all great, but I'm still having to deal with the homeowner who's, who's eyesore is having to, the eyesore dealing with it. So I'm not sure I'm ever going to get there. 70 feet is, I've, I've looked around in the last couple of weeks since our last meeting, we don't have 70-foot tall pine trees in this city. It's going to be impossible for us to try to blend in a 70-foot monopine. It just is. And so as we're thinking this through and we're approving this tonight or, or not, but, um, I, I need to keep in mind that this is only accretive, uh, decision-making for us, and it allows us the flexibility, but it absolutely no way requires us to make that approval of any kind of those heights moving forward.
I, I, I agree with that, although I'll tell you, have to tell you that today I, one of my partners in my firm, I, he said, what, what are you doing tonight? So we're going to talk about this height. And he said, oh, cell phones. He said, I said, yeah, the issue is, you know, you're going to have, you know, towers that are short and inconspicuous, and you have crappy service, or you can have better service and taller, without it has, without it dropping a beat, 70's fine.
Does he live in the village?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, he lives.
Does he live anywhere near a, a state highway?
No. But, so yeah, but, you know, we'll, we'll cross that bridge and conduit, but there is a, you know, a lot of, of unhappiness about the level of cell service in particular locations in our village, so.
Were there, uh, were there cell phones in rural times?
Just smoke signals back when I moved here. Okay. Um, any other questions from council?
No, I, I, to Dan's, to Dan's point, I think, as I was chatting with Chris and thinking it through, almost every one of these cell site installations is unique. And it's, it, we're trying to create a set of rules that are more universal, but I think given that we have decision-making processes that kind of let us, I get another bite at the apple, aside from these, it gives me some comfort. Because I, I have the same frustration personally, and, and I hear it a lot with the crummy cell si, cell sites, uh, crummy cell service. And so in that sense, you know, I, I, I'm sort of supportive of progress, but it can't, we can't be creating the next, uh, let's bury the power lines project, you know, in the, in the process. So having the discretion gives me some comfort in dealing with it site-specific.
All right. Pleasure of council. Who would like to make a motion?
I move to approve.
I move to approve Council Bill 2 Series 2020, amending Sections 20-2-20 and 20-2-130 of the municipal code concerning wireless telecommunications facilities with the amendment of adding the word designated before decision-maker in the introductory paragraph of Section 20-2-130 on first reading.
A second?
A motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Gallagher?
Yes.
Counsel Sheldon?
Yes.
Counsel Blum?
Yes.
Counsel Wheel?
Yes.
We can do, we can do it right now, if, with a consent, the unanimous consent of council, if we'd like, suggestions are made to move up the, to take out of order the new business master plan kickoff discussion, since we have some consultants here, is that, is there any objection?
None.
Without objection, we're going to move to item 10B, and Mr. Kramer?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm just going to do a quick kickoff and then turn it over to, for introductions with our new consultant team for the master plan process. Council may remember, a few weeks back, the approval of the contract with Rick Engineering to serve as the lead consultant for our master plan process. So tonight, we are going to have a brief overview of introductions for the consultants, since many of council has not met them yet, but also talk briefly about the stages of the process, key topics that we'll cover, and then we'll revisit some of the citizen advisory task force conversations that Planning and Zoning had last week. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Britt Palmberg with Rick Engineering.
Good evening, Britt Palmberg, Rick Engineering. We are at 9801 East Easter Avenue in Centennial, Colorado, and with me tonight is Elliot Solsky from FHU. He'll speak here in a couple of minutes. Just going to start out and just say welcome to everyone, and welcome and introduce our firm here, Rick Engineering. It's called Rick Engineering, but actually, we're a full-service firm that provides planning, design, and engineering services. All those bullet points up there illustrate the full breadth of our services. We are based, corporate headquarters out of San Diego, California, actually. We have about 375 professionals. We have about 40 people doing planning, landscape architecture, things like that, clean all the services up there on the list there. We do variety of comprehensive plans, downtown plans, corridor plans, things like that. We also have technical professionals doing civil engineering, GIS, things like that, and also transportation analysis. So a quick intro to the folks you're going to see through the process, I'm Britt Palmberg, I'll be the project manager during the process here. Brian Mooney on the left there, he's the managing principal of our planning group. He's out of San Diego, he won't be here for every single meeting, but he will be here for the major meetings during the process. Katie Russell and Kim Nelson are landscape architects up in our Nevada office, and Rob Fitch is with me down in Centennial, where I'm based. He's our office manager, he's also a civil engineer who deals with infrastructure issues here for various communities. I myself have been doing comprehensive plans for about 15 years, with a background in planning and also a background in business MBA, and also a master's in planning, and been working here in Colorado and across the Midwest and the West here for the last 15 years. So now I'll turn it over to Elliot to introduce FHU.
I am Elliot Solsky, principal with FHU. We are a transportation firm that does transportation work everywhere, from planning to traffic engineering through, through design and construction, based in Centennial, just down the road. We've done transportation plans for, we're just kicking one off for Rappahoe County and for Centennial and Castle Rock and several communities surrounding you. We, we do all kinds of transportation, from transit studies through pedestrian and bicycle-focused studies and, and traffic more vehicular studies, so we're kind of well-rounded multimodally. Let's see, we've worked for Cherry Hills Village, Bob Felsberg has worked for you guys for both private entities and for, for the city for over 20 years. We did the 2017 citywide traffic study, that was a topic of discussion earlier. And, yeah, I could, I could provide some offline context, a little bit of kind of review of that. I need to review it myself, but provide a little background in that.
You don't have it memorized?
Actually, I, I was only a little bit involved, so I never had it memorized, so it's not time, it's just, yeah. But I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot. Just going to go through a little introduction of the overall process here. This little diagram here shows three major stages of a comprehensive plan process, community assessment, exploring alternatives, and confirming the direction. And it's a fairly traditional orientation and progression for a comprehensive plan or master plan process like this. Let's walk you through steps one through 11. First step, project kickoff initiation, that's obviously what we're doing here tonight. We did it last week with the P&amp;Z, we did a very similar briefing with them. It also involves having some kickoff meetings with the CAT, which we'll discuss here in a few minutes as well, and just basically getting up to speed and getting going with the city staff and getting the project up and going. That's really been going on for the last couple of weeks, and will be going on for the next few weeks as well. Second box there, public outreach, we'll discuss that in a bit more detail here in a moment, that really will span the entire project. We don't have an exact timeline up here, but essentially, once the CAT is formed, the overall timeline is about 15 months. The public outreach tools we're going to discuss here in a moment will span the vast majority up until about the last month or so. Number three, community assessment, we're starting that process now, that basically lasts for, you know, a good two months or so. That's the process of reviewing where you are right now, in terms of, you know, all the previous traffic studies, demographics, infrastructure, all the base analysis, a pretty traditional, typical process you go through as a planner. Step four there is really the first community workshop, first community meeting. We have three community meetings outlined here on this diagram. The first one really is to gather input from the community concerning the vision for the future, the key issues to explore, what they like and don't like about Cherry Hills Village. It's a, you know, kind of an open-ended meeting to gain input from the community and from the broad public here concerning the key issues to address and things to focus on here during the master plan process. Step five is basically, we go back, draw from this input from the community, and develop a series of conceptual alternatives and approaches. And in many communities, the key issues are things like land use, a community, for example, like Parker, that's growing on the outside, or, you know, outer ring suburb, for example, a lot more of the issues are concerning land use for future development and even redevelopment. The alternatives and approaches here for Cherry Hills Village may be different, they really will perhaps focus on the key issues we're going to discuss here in a moment, concerning things like traffic, multimodal movement, the characters, semi-rural character, things like that. Really come back to the community after step five and into step six, with a series of kind of major directions the community could pursue in the future. And this, again, this plan is looking out 20 years in the future. Step six, come back for a second community meeting, and really review that input from the first meeting, and review these major, kind of big-picture choices to consider for the community going forward. Gather input from that, go back and really orient towards a preferred direction, it's not really the final plan or a fixed direction, but it's kind of derived from everything we've heard thus far, and all the pros and cons of different approaches and so forth, what's the preferred set of directions for these different elements of the master plan? That's part seven there. Come back for the third and final meeting, and really discuss that preferred direction, get input from the community on that, and also importantly, focus on implementation, discuss with the community some of the major action items, which may, you might want to have highlighted here in the master plan, key actions to focus on over the next 10 to 20 years. And then steps nine, 10, 11 are essentially the process of putting together the final master plan documents, the actual thing you all will use on a monthly basis, even weekly basis. So we provide a, create a draft version of the document, we will run it through a study session with you and the P&amp;Z, and ultimately go through adoption hearings with the P&amp;Z and with council towards the end of the process. So again, the major, you know, the most active parts here are really starting up the next few months and going through steps eight and nine, but the overall process will take about 15 months, give and take. And once we get the CAT formed, we'll come back to you all with a more detailed schedule.
And just real quick, for the charter, we actually also have to take it to PRT, PTRC for their recommendation as well, so there's one additional one. I didn't want anybody to think that that was a step that wasn't going to be happening.
Next slide, Chris. Thank you. So a moment about outreach, as I mentioned, there's a variety of tools that we've used in previous comprehensive plans and master plans around the country, we're going to employ here, and we've discussed this with the city staff, and we discussed it during our interview and so forth. Importantly, we'll be helping to convene the meetings with the CAT, the Citizens Advisory Task Force. That's a group that we'll meet with several times through the process to gain their input concerning the major issues, as we see them going through the progression of the effort here. They are not a, you know, a governing body, they're basically a kind of leadership group, advisor input, and their intent is to really represent the interests of different parts of the community, their backgrounds, things like that. And of course, we'll discuss that here in a few moments, representation. Some folks will be appointed and selected by you all, some by the P&amp;Z, so on and so forth. Importantly, means the stakeholders are important here. Beyond the actual residents here, there's the major stakeholders, for example, the country clubs, the schools here like Kent, there are some businesses on the outskirts of the town and so forth. Input from stakeholders is also important, if you look at issues like multimodal transportation, you know, things like that in the future. We're actually going to be creating a dedicated project website. The example you see in the upper right there is from Lafayette. We are currently working in Lafayette on their comprehensive plan, we're about, about four months away from completing that process. We create a dedicated website with a specific URL for that effort, and it basically holds all the different information about the project, has surveys online, has different bars across the top, so if you want to go back and look at reference documents, things like that, you can do that. It's kind of the central repository for comprehensive plan or master plan information. That'll be established here in the next month or so. We already have run through a skeleton outline with Chris, and we're moving forward on that right now. We also provide various online mapping tools, mapping-based input tools in various communities. There's things like social pinpoint, we actually have a mapping function, we're able to provide for Cherry Hills Village, which essentially provides an aperture to this village, and allows people to go in and make comments about different topics on the given geographic area around the community. So if someone has a comment about, you know, cut-through traffic on Quincy, you're going to get a lot of comments over on Quincy, same thing down on Bellevue, and issues concerning, for example, character may pop up in different parts of the community to a greater frequency than others, right? Mentioned those three community open houses, those are open to the public, we want to make sure those are well-publicized and well-attended. But a lot of these items up here are really to tailor to the folks who don't come to the meetings, beyond the, what we would call the usual suspects coming to these kind of community meetings as part of these processes. The folks who just want to basically check out a survey and do it online, provide comments online, provide comments on a map. The intent here is really to reach people in their daily lives, you know, beyond public meetings, beyond those traditional methods, and reach them online at events and so forth. We can do some outreach and, you know, brochures and so forth at, you have a car show, right? Car shows and the Christmas event you have here that we, we saw back in December as we were coming through, actually. Those are events you can publicize the master plan process through as well. Surveys, we've done a lot of those, and I've done quite a few over my career. Those can be done in-person, open houses, but also replicated, the same questions could be replicated online in surveys, and how those surveys are constructed, the questions that are asked, those are important things that'll run through city staff and also through the CAT, to make sure we're asking the appropriate questions, and questions that aren't, you know, too fluffy, and actually get to the heart of the matter here, right? And importantly, we're going to have a series of briefings with the city council and P&amp;Z. So tonight's really just an intro, the ones in the future will be much more substantive in terms of actual data we collected and findings, and actually sharing with you concepts and so forth. So the key issues to be explored, these bullet points actually are taken fairly directly from the city's RFP, that was put forth back in the fall, and we responded to as part of the selection process. And, you know, we discussed these with the P&amp;Z last week, and they provide their input as we went through the discussion concerning, you know, what issues are we missing here, what issues should we focus on in particular? It's the first look at the laundry list of key issues. We discussed multimodal opportunities a fair amount this evening. Obviously, we discussed cut-through traffic earlier in great depth, but multimodal also means questions about trails, people walking and biking, safety, access, things like that. Second bullet point, obviously, was pretty, pretty dramatic in the earlier discussion concerning reducing cut-through traffic, but also providing for mobility, so it's kind of a double-edged sword there. People want mobility, ways to move about the area, but that cut-through traffic is a very key issue, and we've heard about that even in the last couple of months, getting going on this project here. Some other bullet points highlighted in the RFP, pursuing at least as policies and big-picture goals of the master plan, the pursuit of more energy-efficient and sustainable policies and standards. There's a whole host of tools and discussions about that in the planning world of the various communities about that, all over Colorado nationwide. Policies related to an aging population, that's very key, really around the country, as the population's aging, baby boomers are passing past retirement, and issues of aging are really coming front and center, it's not just that discussion of 10 years out, it's really coming, you know, really to today's discussion. Exterior lighting, in particular, the discussion about dark sky and how to protect dark sky here in Cherry Hills Village is very important. Public safety, it's a key issue of just, you know, in terms of movement, people moving about, but also public safety for crime and so forth in this residential community of Cherry Hills Village. Importantly, the Highline Canal came up in discussions upfront about the project, that whole canal and that whole corridor is being kind of reimagined and so forth, and the impact, impact of that potential change on Cherry Hills Village in terms of trail access, managing stormwater and also drainage, how that all kind of gets worked together with Denver Water and other stakeholders is an important consideration. That importantly, the folks at my shop, Rick Engineering, the civil engineers, the folks dealing with drainage will be looking at, and we have people who actually have been on boards at Denver Water to bring some perspective to that discussion here over the course of the next several months. And importantly, opportunities for citywide drainage improvements. One thing we discussed with city staff thus far is that there's, you know, numerous different drainage districts, and both in terms of water and sewer, and discussions of how that gets managed together in the future is an important element to discuss here as well.
And so I'm just going to talk for a few minutes now about the Citizens Advisory Task Force discussion that Planning and Zoning had just last week, on Tuesday of last week. As council might remember, at your last discussion, the general consensus was that there would be direct appointments by council members, but that you really wanted to hear back from P&amp;Z about what their intent, what their desires, what their hopes were for filling out the rest of the CAT, both in, you know, who fills it, but also things like roster size, et cetera. So they, P&amp;Z had a discussion, we do have a P&amp;Z commissioner here tonight also, in case there's any specific questions. But in general, the consensus by the P&amp;Z was that the role of the group is really not a formal role with formal recommendations to you or to P&amp;Z, but instead acting more like a focus group or a sounding board. The benefit of that is that if you happen to be in a minority view, your, your voice is still heard. It doesn't drown out anybody just because you don't end up on a majority side. It is obviously a little less formal, and, you know, it may not necessarily have this black-and-white conclusion that might be viewed as a way to sway a particular outcome, but I think the idea is that it is, that informality leads to a more thorough discussion that might be able to hit a wider range of perspectives on a particular topic. As far as the roster goes, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation, or I guess they had a formal vote pending city council concurrence, that they would like to see six members appointed by district from city council. They also, based on input from a previous Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Kevin Iverson, who came and spoke here, he also had a presentation, he was extremely helpful, I thought, I thought it was a valuable insight that he provided. He talked that the last time the master plan was done, all Planning and Zoning Commissioners served on their version of the CAT. That idea resonated with P&amp;Z, and they felt that that would be beneficial, and so, all but one, there was one who had some potential scheduling conflicts, so he was unable to commit to that. It's still an open meeting, and he can participate as he would, but as far as an actual roster spot, six of the seven, P&amp;Z members would have a space. And then they have voted to interview and appoint five additional seats. So one of the interesting aspects of this is that early in the discussion, that night, there was also quite a bit of good dialogue about the PTRC and their participation in this. They would be able to act as a liaison between the PTRC and the CAT, and so, early on in the discussion, there was a lot of positive momentum towards representation. The conversation kept evolving and moving forward, and I think by the time the actual motion was made and the discussion was had, there was some focus on things like overall roster size, should it be five additional seats, should it be three additional seats? And the PTRC part got dropped, I think, it would be And the P T R C part got dropped, I think, it would be my interpretation. And so, I reached out to a few P and Z members afterwards, including the commissioner present tonight, and I think there's general support for council considering possibly amending the P and Z recommendation to add a P T R C as one of the five designated spots.
Is that one of the five, or is that an additional?
I think it theoretically could be open for discussion, but I think, based on the discussion, as I recall, and Earl may have some additional insight, but I believe it's one of the five could then be the P T R C member. Because I think there was a discussion about the overall number of the roster that they were hoping to keep.
And I would defer to them wanting to help the overall base thing can be effective. So I didn't want, that's why I wanted to be clear on that.
There was discussion about making sure there was an odd number.
Correct.
So I think that helps answer that question.
Although if they're not going to vote on anything, I don't know why that matters, but okay, that's fine.
Yeah. Agreed, but that was still nonetheless part of the discussion.
Whatever, that's good.
I do think that's, particularly since this is going to go to P T R C, it's very important to have one member there who can then convey, here's why, to the P T R C, here's why P and Z did this, right? That's a great idea from you or them, whoever came from this. Any other comments, Council Blommer? Any questions?
Yeah, just one other statement on this particular slide. So no requested motion tonight from city council. If you did want to make a motion to concur with P and Z's, we do have language, but if not, we would have this on the March 3rd agenda noted as such for consideration, so you could vote on it then.
We could do this March 3rd, because the applications aren't due until March 7th.
Correct, that is right.
So we're in good shape. We can do it March 3rd. That's okay.
So with that, I'm going to turn it. If there's no other questions on the Citizens Advisory Task Force or no other changes to the recommendation, I can turn it back over to Britt to talk about next steps.
Sure.
All right, thank you. So again, next steps, as mentioned earlier in the presentation, we're going to be building that project website and working with city staff on that over the course of the next few weeks, and really starting, or in the community assessment, including data gathering analysis, as you see there, reviewing existing plans, for example, the 2017 traffic study, information on demographics, economics, transportation. I feel like I've gotten a pretty good briefing on the Union interchange and I-25 in Bellevue and Elliott as well.
It was fortunate, good timing.
Yeah, it was very good timing, yes. Infrastructure and drainage, and of course, land uses and open space. So just inventorying where you are right now, gathering data, reports and so forth. And then really, the next steps for city council is, as mentioned, participating in the selection of the C A T members over the course of the next handful of weeks. We'll be back in the springtime for another briefing to really summarize what we learned through the community assessment of where you are now and where you might be going in the future in terms of projections and so forth, and then provide input as you go through this process to staff regarding the key goals for the project master plan update. We can do that actually now. This is an opportunity tonight really to ask questions of us about the overall process and just really weigh in on the key issues you see here, and it's kind of an open forum and discussion.
Great, thank you very much. Council Blommer, any questions?
Since, as a real estate developer, I'm looking at your flow chart here. Can you put some timing on that, the flow chart that we have been given here?
The Excel version? Yeah. Yes, as mentioned, we'll be putting a timeline to that here. Once the C A T is formed, the process with the C A T has been a little bit elongated here at the upfront period. But once that's in focus over the course of the next month, we'll be putting together a more detailed schedule for you.
But more specifically, I think it's, we're going to be able to plug in approximately 15 months from when the C A T gets set. So depending on when that is, you can kind of shift it up or back depending on when that is.
Thank you.
Council Sheldon?
Britt, thanks very much. Great presentation. I don't have any comments at this time. I'm excited that we're kicking off. I'm excited you guys are part of the team, and I'm sorry we had to have you wait as long as we did tonight, but I'm glad you were able to hear some of that dialogue.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Was educational.
Britt and Elliott, thank you for coming. Just a fundamental question. We've got an existing master plan. How does that lay down on, or how does this process lay upon the existing master plan? And how do the two work together? And how will you use the existing master plan as a resource for moving forward?
Good question, very good question. This has been deemed a master plan update, right? So many communities will just, they have a plan that's 10, 20 years old, and often it really looks old, and it's really dated in terms of information and so forth. Doesn't provide as much guidance, so a lot of communities just start fresh and just start over with everything. They might occasionally look back at the old document in terms of, what did we say 15 years ago, 20 years ago, but they start fresh. This is viewed, I think, and Chris can chime in, as more of an update. We're not going to be bound by the current master plan document, but it's very informative for us to find out, you know, what the vision was from 10 years ago, what the key goals and policies are. A lot of those may very well carry over, right? Or they could be modified slightly. So we want to use that as a basis, especially for the policy-oriented aspects of the plan, and especially for the vision, and definitely look back at the input provided also from the community through that process, because we want to not, we don't want to just rerun old stuff, right? We want to really go beyond the input we heard last time and really create a plan that's really useful for the next 10, 20 years.
And I think that's absolutely right. The only thing I would add to that is that, once this does get adopted, though, this is the master plan. It won't say master plan update, and then you have to go cross-reference the 2008. This will be the master plan. So update is kind of a tricky word. Update really refers more to the process, not the final product.
Right. The other thing to mention about these master plan documents, the document is now 10 years old. Through this, our industry processes evolve, you know, the way plans are put together has evolved. We definitely mention this in all communities we work in. They're becoming a lot more graphical and a lot more user-friendly that way. And to some extent, communities, you know, it depends on the predilections and preferences of a given community, many communities have a master plan that's shorter, and it's almost more of a marketing piece, so that, for example, if you're dealing with new residents coming to town or new organization, you can show this master plan to them. It's not just a policy document with all words. It shows a lot of good images. It's more conveying of your vision from the visual aspect.
Council Brown?
I think, I was kind of along the same lines as Mike, but even maybe a little bit more specific, which was that, you know, I think our existing master plan is actually pretty good, and it, my personal belief is that many of those things are still important and relevant. There are, for example, rebuilding City Hall, that's been done, we can take that. But from a broader perspective, I think most of those things will still resonate with our residents, but we do have a lot of new people in our community. While we don't have growth to necessarily deal with, our community does change over time. We have new people who were part of those discussions. And so I think what, at a minimum, what we need from some of those things is either an affirmation that, yes, that was the right, we still believe that, or no, that's not relevant anymore. And in particular, some of the things that, we made a lot of progress on that last master plan with, for example, the building heights and restrictions and things of that nature. So I would just add that to your list of issues. I guess this is my very long-winded way of saying, of all the things that you've considered and you've listed here, I'd like to take those things, dark skies, the, what do we call that, the FAR, the?
Oriole.
Yeah, yeah. All of, that whole thing was implemented as a result of the master plan, and did we get it right? Are those the right restrictions? Does it need to be more? Does it need to be less? That kind of thing, so.
Okay, thank you.
Council Will?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd certainly like to echo Katie's comments that, you know, the master plan, the community's been very stable for quite a long time. And so, it is what it is, and people move into it because it is what it is, and they want it, you know, I think there's some continuity. Sure, the context in which we are changes, traffic, you know, and all the rest of it, and we move some of those, some of those tasks now get a completed check mark, and so they need to come off. But in general, I think we all have a fair amount of respect for the plan and its importance to the community. And it helps guide us in our decision-making, which is probably, you know, more important than figuring out what to do with X hundred acres, you know, whatever, because we don't have that. So I'd pass that along as a thought, sort of echoing Katie's comments. You've got us on the hook for, gratefully, I say that, on the hook for a recommendation for the C A T, one from each of us. What's the deadline on that?
I will get you, we do not have the interview date for the P and Z to interview potential applicants for the four or five remaining seats. It will probably, it would be good to have it be around that same time, but because we're still, Ethan's still reaching out to P and Z members to try and get a date nailed down, we want to give applicants time to put it on their schedule after that March 7th date. So my guess, even though we don't know that date yet, my guess is it'll proceed somewhere on the third week of March.
Okay, thank you.
I might actually, though, if I could suggest that we might want to move our deadline up a little bit, just because if there are people...
Who don't get it, who want to apply.
Yeah, right. I mean, that's sort of the crossover, and also from a diversity of selection process, it might be nice for P and Z to know kind of what may already be represented in that group, so that they can fill in whatever holes. So if you could tell, like, maybe back us out a week?
Sure. So the week before that, March 7th, is that last Friday in February, I believe, which is the...
This Friday, it's like a week and a half.
No, it's next Friday, I believe, right?
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, maybe.
The 28th.
That was an interesting thought.
The 28th, maybe? Well, I guess there's not much difference between the 28th and, you know, first thing in the morning on the 2nd.
Yeah, okay. So start thinking about it now, is the point.
Yeah.
Good to, thank you too. I appreciate this presentation, and I do want to echo too that I think the master plan that we have is good. The goals, I think, the goals and strategies and some of the recommendations, I think, are ones that would be supported now. I mean, it hasn't changed. I think there's presumption that some of those are still, are still top in mind of the residents, as I recall. But it'd be interesting to see how the P and Z looks back on it and says, because there are specific recommendations there, and see how, whether we have succeeded or not in following some of those and getting some of those done. I think in some areas, we have, and some we haven't, but I do, so I do think the substance, I agree with Council Brown, the substance of what's there, I think, is going to be, is probably going to be pretty generally what you'll find people thinking today. But I do think that having the master plan that is community-friendly, that we can post as well, and used as a, you know, a kind of the document for new residents of our community and what our community is and what it aspires to, and that we can be proud of and put it on the website. I know that, I think, can use a lot of work and improvement from the old master plan and the way it was arranged. So I agree with your comments about, I think, it's, well, 15 years, was it 15 years that we did it, or 16?
19. I remember. This was done in '08.
'08, yeah.
Yeah, so 12.
Oh, it's only, it's only 10, 12, anyway. Anyway, things have changed since then, and things have improved, I know, so. Appreciate it. Any other comments and thoughts? Okay, thank you very much, and I can certainly ask. Mr. Holland, would you have to add anything while we have you here? You've sat here for a couple hours, so.
I think it was a great discussion. I agree wholeheartedly, the discussion about the master plan. Obviously, any strategic plan, any organization looks at the past plan that was done. That's a starting point to a large degree. That's certainly where I'm sure P and Z and C A T will look at. And the point is, is that even if it was just like, you know what, this is a great plan, it's going to be the same, but it becomes the new master plan for Cherry Hills, and the old one's gone, even if it doesn't change a word. Obviously, there's going to be some things that are going to change, hopefully, but for the most part, it does represent what we are, and it's done, used as a guiding post. And I really like Council Brown's suggestion to move it up a little bit, because that is the other thing that we were looking at, which is to try to get as much representation. So while, obviously, there'll be district representation, but then if we know that we've got an equestrian person, or if we know we've got this, that's an important thing to know, because we'll be looking to try to find out and fill out those other five spots to get, you know, the broad constituencies that we have within the, within. So I think that was a great suggestion. And you know me, I'm always pushing to go faster and not slower, so.
Good. Okay, thank you very much. So if, let's move back to unfinished business. Agenda item 9C, Council Bill 3, Series 2020, replacing references to specific dollar amounts for fees, costs, deposits, and other charges in the municipal code with references to a fee schedule resolution to be adopted by city council. And this is second and final reading, and Laura?
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of city council. Staff is presenting for council's consideration tonight on second and final reading, Council Bill 3, Series 2020. There have been no changes since first reading. Staff believes it is best practices to remove all the fees throughout the municipal code and gather them in one document, the fee resolution, which is next item on the agenda for your consideration. This process began with the code modernization process, and we are completing it hopefully with these two items. And we're hoping that this will assist staff in reviewing fees more regularly and making them more effective for what actual costs are. As was mentioned last time, this particular council bill does not address liquor license fees or Chapter 18 fees. You've just approved Chapter 18, so that's taken care of, and liquor license is coming down the pipe here shortly in the next couple of meetings, hopefully. So staff is, or staff is happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions? Council Will?
One minor one. Section 64100, where we talk about security alarm operating permits, the, we state that the charge for the first two responses made by the police department, it's on, I'm sorry, it's on page three, top of the page, 64100. We mentioned that the charge for the first two responses made by the police department and for false alarms calendar year is included in the security permit fee. My thought when I read that, because we say the same thing in the table in the next, in the next action, is, you know, even though we're not charging, it's still sort of a fee, why don't we strike that sentence, just incorporate it in the fee table as we have already, and avoid the risk of having the same thing in two places and potential for inconsistency over time?
My thought would be, if you're going to strike that, on that basis, I would leave it in the ordinance and strike it out of the resolution fee. I think the resolution in the table, I think it's just in there as a matter of information for people in the table, that there's, you know, not a charge.
Well, I just, I have an aversion to having the same thing in two places...
I understand that.
...because it can become out of sync. And I, I'm impartial as to where it is. It's just, as I thought about it, we might be looking at a whole table of fees and thinking about it, and the question could come up at that time, do we want to continue to offer the first two as free or not, or what? And so it seemed like, even though we weren't charging, it was kind of like a fee, is just a zero fee for those first two, and that, you know, kind of taking it out of the ordinance, putting it in the table might be a, might be a solution to eliminate the redundancy.
That's really just a policy decision, so it's up to you all to decide.
Yep, that's all I had, otherwise.
Council Brown?
I didn't have any other comments, but yeah, I guess I could kind of go either way on that. I'm just still reading through that, but yeah.
Council Gallagher?
If you'd like to make a motion, actually, or whatever your pleasure of counsel is, if you'd like to...
So let me go back to the question to the city attorney. I understand your comment about leaving it in the ordinance and taking it out of the resolution, but that then, if we then did want to change the policy of how many were free and how many weren't, we would have to redo the ordinance. What if it did just say, "Charges for responses to false alarms shall be set by resolution of the city council"?
You could do that.
And then the resolution says, "The first two are free."
Right, I, I'll just tell you, the reason I went with this approach on this one is because we also had security guards, and, and there was, you know, a fee per number of guards, and that was set out on the ordinance, and I decided, sort of, well, let's just keep the sort of overall structure here, and, and do this, you know, elaboration in the resolution, but it's, it's...
That's a good reason, too, though, because if it's done, we want to be as consistent as possible.
But they don't have to be the same either, so it's, it's really the pleasure of counsel. Your, your suggested wording works for me.
I think your point's a good one. I mean, it's, it's better to be more flexible in the fee schedule than it is in, and keep the ordinance general, so...
Okay, well, here, here we go. I move to approve Council Bill 3, Series 2020, replacing references to specific dollar amounts for fees, costs, deposits, and other charges in the municipal code with references to a fee schedule resolution to be adopted by City Council with the amendment that Section 6-4-100 be revised to read, "Charges for responses to false alarms shall be set by resolution of the City Council" on second and final reading.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Sounds very good. All right, need a roll call?
I just want to make sure we're not...
We're looking at the last sentence of this, and so, so we would strike that underlined, to understand the motion, strike the underlined charges for the third successive responses, so we're looking at the last sentence, "The charge shall be paid to the city..."
No, just redo the underline.
The underline.
Just re, just rewrite the underlined sentence.
Rewrite the underlined sentence to say, "Charges..."
Yes.
"...for responses to false alarms shall be set by resolution of the City Council."
But then in the last sentence, there's a problem? Yeah, actually, you're talking about deleting the first sentence, the charge for the first two responses with the proposed language, eliminating the un, underlined sentence, and then we're looking at the last sentence, "The charge shall be paid to the city by the permitty of a security alarm system upon each successive response made by the Police Department."
Kathy, the thought I had was, was trying to say was, I'd take out the, the second sentence, you know, after, after...
Yeah.
...security alarm system operating with permit. I'd take the next sentence out...
Yeah.
...and then I'd strike the words, the third and successive, in that underlined sentence, so like, "Charges..." "...for responses to a false alarm shall be set by resolution of the City Council."
And I think the last sentence does still work, the fee does still have to be paid, it's just zero.
Well, I think you need to add on the last sentence, "The charge, if applicable, shall be paid." Just add, interliny...
How about that, does that work?
Yeah, if applicable, after.
And add if applicable.
I think that works.
Do I need to withdraw that in my motion?
No, no, I can, I can restate the, I can restate the motion now, so just clarify. So the motion is to revise the current Section 4-100A to read, "Security alarm systems operating with a permit period, deleting the following sentence, starting with the charge, deleting and continuing to delete the sentence that says, 'a charge,' and then with the third sentence, it'll read, "Charges," delete "for the third and successive," so "Charges for a, for false..."
For responses to false alarms.
"Charges for responses to false alarms shall be set by resolution of City Council." And then "Charges," comma, "if applicable, shall be paid," finishing the final sentence.
Yes.
Very good, Counselor.
Okay, is that, that's, that's the motion?
That's terrific.
And the amendment, okay.
He's Mayor Council.
So we have a motion, we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second. We need a roll call?
Council Gallagher?
Yes.
Council Sheldon?
Yes.
Council Blum?
Yes.
Council Wheel?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you for your work in spotting that. Now we have the fee schedule. Item 9D, Resolution 6, adopting a fee schedule. And Laura, this is the fee schedule we were just talking about?
Yes, so this was presented as a draft at the last meeting. Since then, staff has worked with the city attorney and a couple of department heads to review a couple items that were missing. So we did review it and find some things to make sure to have in there, but we're confident that we have everything from the code and some previous resolutions. We have chosen to not integrate the construction excavation standards with this resolution. That will remain a separate document that was approved by resolution of City Council previously, just because it is such a complicated document for right-of-way permits, and we prefer that someone looking at that document have all that information together in one place.
Very good. Any questions for Laura? Council Blum?
I do have one question. On 17330, you're talking about fair market value payment, how is that determined? Do we have any specific criteria for that? Seven five, 7.5% of the gross area of all land being subdivided or fair market value payment?
Yeah, it is appraisal. City manager, I believe, has, it's been a while, but I think the city manager has the authority to require an appraisal. Sorry, my wifi is just going down. Check the code. Yeah, my memory serves.
There's discretion about whether or not to require the appraisal or not?
Yes, yes, that's what I said, the city manager may, yeah.
Well, I think if you get into the point where you are requiring, if the city is requiring a cash-in-loue payment, and there's no way to start valuing the cash-in-loue payment other than an appraisal of the subject property to determine that cash-in-loue, right? So we just don't go through a whole lot of subdivisions, or we'd all know this off the top of our head.
True.
I know that when I go do it in a different jurisdiction, we have to go out and get an appraisal, and sometimes multiple appraisals. No, I, I have comments on this issue, too, though, unless you have more.
Council Sheldon?
Okay, just a couple of questions. Do we have the ability to add to these deposit accounts? So an applicant comes in and makes a $2,000 subdivision deposit or a $5,000 site plan deposit? If we crush through that deposit by way of our consultants churning through review time, do we go to the applicant and ask them for more money?
Yes, and we've specified initial deposits in almost all of these, and if we missed one, then it's intended to be an initial deposit that we would refresh as necessary, ask for more.
And there's usually an agreement that's executed, right, that reiterates that point?
Okay. And then, along those lines of that initial deposit, if an applicant puts up $5,000 for a site plan and only goes through $1,500 of it, I assume the balance is returned?
Correct.
The final comment, and this is just an opinion, but regarding the $2,000 fee specifically for the floodplain variance, on page 5 of 10, I, my experience is that those floodplain issues can get quite costly, and I don't know, I guess if we have a mechanism in place to continue to ask for more money, it's probably not an issue, but starting with a $2,000 deposit on a floodplain matter, will probably get gobbled up by our engineers very, very quickly. But just a comment, I'm not asking for a change to it. That's all. Thanks, Mayor.
No comment.
Council Brown?
No.
Council Wheel?
I move to approve Resolution 6, Series 2020, adopting a fee schedule.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Voice vote?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Agenda item 10B, we have a vacancy on the Cherry Hills Village Art Commission?
Yes, we do. So staff is asking for Council to select two council members to review applications, conduct interviews, and make a recommendation to Council to fill the vacancy. We are advertising it in the March, March issue of the Crier, and it's on the website. And just as a note, we have been notified by some other art commission members that they don't wish to renew their terms when they come up later this year, so there will probably be more vacancies, and we're hoping that this one solicitation process will yield a lot of applications, we won't have to go back out for more for those vacancies. Also, there's, we're constantly looking at board, commission, and committee terms to make sure they're staggered, and in this case, the art commission's terms have become a bit unstaggered. We have a bunch that are coming up in May of this year, so we're going to propose that some reappointments in May, which will be coming back to Council about those reappointments in May, but those be, some be appointed to only a one-year term or a two-year term in order to reestablish those terms, so just wanted to make that.
So it's going to be in March, with the, with the deadline being in...
At the end of March, so we have the March, March 27th is the deadline for applications right now.
But do we have people who like to, you know, generally interview these, or...
No, not me. But I have, I do have a, I do have a question, I guess, is, do we have an inherent problem with the art committee right now, why we've got people wanting to turn, to leave after their term?
No, the members who don't want to be reappointed, this is their third term, I believe, they're serving.
They've been on there a long time.
And they've been on since the very beginning of the commission, they just feel like it's time to let some other people take their...
You know, and I think that those who are leaving, it would be good to ask them for people who should be applying.
Yes, Ann Columbus, the chair, is one of the people who is not planning on being reappointed, and she already has several people in mind, and she will be handing applications to us, so...
I think that would be the best source, and we could get, hopefully, a lot, a lot of applicants to fill those positions.
So I'll interview, and if anybody else wants to...
Have a strong desire to interview with Council Brown? I mean, I...
I'll bring the donuts. Okay, thanks.
Okay, Brown and Gallagher are volunteers, so when we get to that, we can... Any other comments before we move to reports? I have a, since we've been here a while, I'll go through them quickly. I have reports of what I've been, it's been a busy time. I went to the Metro Mayor's Caucus on February 5th. The lieutenant governors there are talking about the public health insurance option, a lot of things, but the, the major issue that was there was really this construction, that you probably, you know, arbitration, this proposal, whenever they say fairness about arbitration, but it's a big deal for the Metro Mayor's Caucus, because they've finally gotten construction of, of some multiple, you know, multi-person housing now, it's finally going in the, you know, back up on the upslope where there had been none, right?
For sale condos.
For sale condos. Correct. For sale condos are, they're finally being built again, and, and as a result, basically, of some of the changes, I think, because of the arbitration. And so this is a, a stamp by them, it comes from the plaintiffs' bar, again, to, to do this. So, the Mayor's Caucus is obviously, you know, opposed to that, and is taking a position opposed to it. I did meet with Kevin Boomer and discuss things with CML, had a mayor's lunch with mayors from around here, Centennial and, and Englewood and Sherrod, and there's nothing really new to report there. Went to the CML Legislative Workshop on the 13th. Again, they talked about a lot of the issues we've been talking about, outdoor camping in public places has come up again, but that won't go anywhere. So I, I really, a lot of these things, there's a lot of things on the plate, but CML is opposed to a lot of these issues, and we'll see where they go. Governor Polis was there, and he, and he actually said the right things. He talked about, you know, local governments are best positioned to solve the problems, and, you know, I think he meant it, you know, he said, you know, he should, he's, he's looking to push decisions down to local municipalities and cities and supportive of us. He talked about 5G is a big thing for him, and expanding broadband throughout the entire state, and also looking for ways to fund transportation corridors, and how that can be done, and, and he brought his dog, too, so. It was not the bulldog, it was not the pit, it was not the pit bull, it was his own dog, and he's something. Went to Policy, CML Policy Committee, and, and there are some things that are coming up that would, that affect us, that we're, the CML is, is supporting or opposing. One is there's a proposal for email communications from Council, and exempting that from the, from the open records laws. So, so it's the, the regular stuff. So if we, so it's a, we could use email for forwarding information, responding to non-residents, or posing questions for later discussion, so we could send that to all of us, and that wouldn't be an open meeting. It would still be, you know, subject to, you know, if they, open records logging, somebody wants it, they can get it, but it wouldn't be a meeting, and so you could actually do, you know, actually have some communications among council members for things. So we're, CML's supporting that, and it's proposed by Fort Collins, and I think that may, has a good chance of passing, it'd be really nice to kind of give us some more flexibility. There's also a proposal to extend the time that we would have to respond to CORO requests, to, to 21 days, instead of, you know, instead of the shorter time. CORO requests for commercial purposes, so they're running into a lot of people, businesses are asking for, do CORO requests, to get all kinds of information they want for marketing and stuff, and they say, well, if those come in, we can have more time to do it. We will support that, of course. There's exclusions for media. Yes, there's exclusions for media, and, and schools and stuff like that. It only applies to commercial, for commercial use, but it would, it would be nice, and nicer for cities to have. A lot of discussion about the RTAs and expanded regional, and Randy can talk about this, because it's going to come before Dr. Cog, too. This is House Bill 1151, which I've talked about. So the, the Metro Mayor's Council, this is really their primary transportation initiative, is to say, look, all these statewide issues have failed, so, you know, let's, you know, let's create something so we have a, a plan, so the, so Dr. Cog can become, basically, can become an RTA, and, and then have the ability to tax, you know, you have to vote for the taxes, but it would allow Dr. Cog to, to be the entity that, within its jurisdiction, it could impose taxes and do, and do transportation projects, highway projects, and other transportation projects. I think out of the mayors, out of the 40 mayors, probably 30 of them are all in favor of this, and more than that. I mean, it's a very, it's initiative. But Louisville and Boulder are opposed to it, and so they're making a big, they'll be opposed to it at Dr. Cog, and, and I'm not sure why, other than, because, you know, it's, it's voluntary, if they don't want to be in Dr. Cog, they could drop out, but they insist that it's a bad idea and don't like, they don't want to be spending tax money to build highways that don't benefit them, or something, I think. And they're also burned by the RTD, because they're in the RTD District, paying RTD taxes and getting no, and getting no trains, so, whatever, it's kind of, I think the rest of the mayors were very kind of discouraged that Louisville and Boulder are so adamant against it, but we'll see where that goes. There was a story in the Denver Post about it, too, so, about the whole transportation issue. There was encryption policy that's going ahead, talking about, this is from the ACLU, or I guess it's really the media, saying that they, they want, they want to, the legislation would require us to, to adopt an encryption policy. That's really what it would do by 2021 for our communications, and, and basically, they said, okay, since there's some that need to be encrypted, obviously police or whatever, but you have to have a policy, and then they, and then the legislation says, but you can't have unreasonable or burdensome. Those would be unlawful. So, you know, CML is going to oppose and say, oh my God, talk about a litigation nightmare, you know, you adopt a policy, and the ACLU is going to see, because they say it's too, you know, burdensome, or, so who knows what those terms mean? So CML will oppose, oppose that, but that has some support, apparently. We have a, in the future, we have the County Commissioners Breakfast coming up, and then the CML Executive Board Meeting is coming up later this week, where we'll look at what the Policy Committee recommended, and hopefully fix the recommendation on the RTAs. I will be judging the high, high school mock trial competition this weekend in Rappel County. Monday, we have a Rappel County Open Space and Trail Advisory Board Meeting, and then next, the 28th, we have the Transportation and Mobility Committee of the, of the Metro Mayor's Council will be meeting, too, so I'll be attending that. And I think, oh, I did want to make sure before we adjourn that we have a quorum for the March 17th meeting.
As far as I've heard, Mayor Protem Brown and Council Gallagher will be absent, but I haven't heard anyone else that'll be absent.
Also, I'll note that March 17th, right now, is a very light agenda, and so what I'd like to be able to do is just work with the mayor, Mayor Protem, and if we don't have anything for that day, maybe we cancel that meeting.
Well, my thought, I, I think that's right. My thought was, we're going to do the interviews on... The 7th, but that's... So this would be the first meeting after the interviews, right?
The city manager interviews.
City manager interviews.
Yeah, yeah, we, the interview's on our Saturday.
Right.
And that, that would be the first council meeting.
Be the first council meeting after the, if there's something we wanted to do there.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, we can still hold it for the time being, and then we'll determine if we need to have a meeting.
Good. Okay. Any part?
I got a couple of quick things.
March 4th is.
Oh, okay, I'm going to a ULI conference, I thought you might be there as well, mayor.
Yeah, I would like.
Second thing, chief, if I could, just for a moment, in your, in your report, you mentioned a couple of quick, you mentioned a couple of things, and I'm going to try to get through this real quick. It says in January, you continue to work on e-citation electronic ticketing projects, and staff's had a great deal of contact, and prepared to work on getting it applied properly. I'm sorry if I missed a meeting or missed an update, I don't know that I know anything about that. Could you mind giving us just a quick snapshot?
No, so e-citation was budgeted for last year.
Okay.
This is where we have gotten in, we have all the hardware that's in for, you make a traffic stop, you swipe a license, it populates, and you get a printout fairly quickly. We've, we've run into a snag with some of the software that we have to supply the data for, some of the tables that we supplied to the, the person, the Brazos company, they've kind of changed what they wanted, kind of midstream on us, so we fell a little bit behind. I was hoping that that would already be in use by our officers, but it's not yet. We're working hard on it, though.
Okay. And my second comment, you, you assisted Chief Varney over at Greenwood Village on them interviewing a commander?
Correct.
Okay, wasn't 100% clear in here.
Sorry.
I was going to have to ask if Commander Weathers was leaving or something, but.
No, no, no. Chief, Chief Varney and I have a, have a, have a great relationship, he's invited me over several times when they've done promotional processes, and that was for their latest promotion.
Great. My final comment, I wanted to thank Jay and Public Works, I know you guys are making an effort to get around the city and bang out some of the, the thick ice that's been forming up from all the storms we've had. I saw your crew in our, my neck of the woods today, so thank you very much for, for getting to that.
I want to thank Emily Black for putting together the food drive and coordinating it for the Pine Ridge Reservation. It was, from all indications, very successful. Secondly, Scott Roswell will be the appointee for the Citizens Advisory Task Force for District 4.
Excellent, good choice.
I also wanted to thank Jay for Public Works helped with the ice holes, as I call them. And the bottom of our street was the enormous potholes, but anyway, thank you for that. And then I saw an interesting story on the news today that I thought was very relevant, giving, given the move in our community for everyone to install security cameras, and I, being the technology person that I am, always have hesitations about that. Did you see that Ring cameras have been hacked?
No.
And in people's homes, not just the doorbells, but the, the in-home cameras where people are talking to eight-year-old girls in their bedrooms over their security cameras, so I just, it's another word of caution, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, and I guess to some extent, it's a matter of why would anyone care, but those security cameras, that, whatever information you're recording is potentially accessible to the world, and I just would encourage all of our communities to be thoughtful about that and to have very solid plans in place for how that information is used. We have residents in Cherry Hills Village that, you know, God forbid it be used to stalk someone, to be used to blackmail someone, to be used, so, anyway, that's it.
Counselor Wheel?
Yeah, thank you. The, we had, well, BOAA met, there was a variance requested, it was an unusual situation because of when the house was built, long time ago, and when the neighborhood was subdivided long time ago. This is a very, very small lot in a, in a resident, residential area that's got zoning that ultimately, if you had the proper setbacks, would have permitted them something like a 30-by-20, 20-foot house, you know? And so they were looking to put a bit of an addition on. I didn't vote because there was a quorum, but the, the group, I think, was, the presentation included neighbors and all kinds of support for it. The addition was put around to the back of the house so that it was pretty unobtrusive, so that ended up passing. And, you know, Chris did a good job, I think, supporting the, the applicant as well, even though he had to deny the original application by the nine standards that we have. Yes, spirited discussion earlier, about two weeks ago, Dr. Cog work session, as Russell mentioned, HB, House Bill 1151 seeks to, and it's coming up for a March reading, at least the last look, the, to seeks, seeks to create a regional transportation authority. They've tried several times at the state level, which is probably where it would be most appropriate, but even so, it's not flown, so the, the region itself, basically greater Denver metropolitan area, is, is an alternative that at least gets something going, as opposed to the logjam that we have today in the world of transportation. So that'll come up, is a question whether Dr. Cog supports that or not at tomorrow night's meeting. Unless I hear something, you know, from the group, I think we should support it, the legislation. I know normally, we're kind of quiet on taking positions on things, but I think this is one that does affect the city, it's transportation-related, and it's a, it's a good move forward. And then in my former role as the alternate for the noise committee, there's a, still on their email distribution, anyway, there was, they're putting up a whole new website that is in the test mode now, but should give us a bunch more information on the noise roundtable and what all's going on there. That's all I have. Oh, aside from, thank you, Jay, for the neighborhood and the streets.
City manager?
I have no comments. I'm going to pass.
Chief, Tovare?
Just a couple of things, just, again, thank you for the support with the awards, that was a, a big deal to my, my department, and then, secondly, we'll, tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday, we'll be interviewing 13 people for our open police officer position, so I'm hopeful.
No report. Jay?
Can you see me? The city's auditors will be here on Monday to review the 2019 financial statement, so they'll be here all next week.
Good, good luck, Jessica. City attorney? Okay, unless there's anything else, motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor? We are adjourned at 9:48.
Thank you very much.
Phew. Who are we?
That was, that was an hour longer.